I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you read the land acknowledgement?
Councilmember Zwik, do you want to read the land acknowledgement?
Sure.
Do you have it here? I know.
The city of Santa Monica is located on the land of the Tavangar. With great respect, the city acknowledges the Gabriel Leno Tongva as the first people of this ancestral and unceded territory of Kuruvanga, a village that we know as Santa Monica. We honor their elders, past and present, and the Gabriel Leno descendants who are part of the Gabriel Leno Tongva tribes. We recognize that these people are still here and as settlers in Kyam, we recognize that our responsibility and obligation to care for their land in partnership with them. The city of Santa Monica commits to work in partnership with the Gabriel Leno Tongva people to uplift their voices and visibility on their ancestral land.
Thank you.
I'll now call the roll, councilmembers Zwik.
Here.
Councilmember Rahal.
Here.
Councilmember Raskin.
Here.
Councilmember Snell.
Here.
Councilmember Skaya.
Here.
Mayor Protem Terosus is absent at the moment. Mayor Negrete.
Here.
Will any council members be recusing themselves from any items on the agenda pursuant to the Levine Act? Hearing none. Mayor, did you want to announce the agenda management?
Yeah, we will be pulling per staff item five F, so we will not be taking any public comment on item five F.
Now move on to public input. Public comment is permitted only on items not on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. State law prohibits the city council from taking any action on items not listed on the agenda, including issues raised under this agenda item. And it looks like we have fifteen speakers, and it looks like three of them are minors, so they should be moved to the front of the list.
Okay, do you know who those minors are?
I do.
If you have to go to school tomorrow, raise your hand and come line up first.
So first is Victor Salazar, Millie Garcia. And I'm sorry, is it Itse Cruz?
Itse Cruz, yeah. Okay. Victor Salazar?
Dear members of City Hall, my name is Victor Salazar, and I'm a junior at Santa Monica High School. I am a proud member of Legado Latino and currently serve as the president of Los Angelitos, where I represent Hispanic and Latino students at Santa Monica High School within the district and throughout our community. Today, March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, I came before you with a shared vision and a heartfelt request on behalf of the Hispanic and Latino community, particularly concerning the upcoming senior graduations, celebrating and the recognition of our seniors with their stoles. The students, especially the seniors, are deeply committed to the club and are eager to celebrate our shared heritage. As a community club at Santa Monica High School, we have listened to the voices and are planning to an event to honor the seniors for their dedication and hard work in Legado Latino. Additionally, we will recognize the other sub-clubs with Legado Latino for their commitment and contributions to the community. We are requesting a total amount of ten thousand dollars, which will help fund the senior celebration and support those students who have put in the time and effort into the clubs at Legado Latino and Santa Monica High School. These stoles will be worn by the seniors at the celebration and will serve as a recognition of their dedication to the club. This assistance will be significant help to both my club and me. We are facing financial challenges to limited funds and fundraising opportunities. Our goal is to secure ten thousand dollars to make this vision a reality and reward hardworking students for their contributions to the celebration of Los Angelitos Club. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Salazar. Millie Garcia?
Good afternoon, honorable members of City Hall. My name is Millie Garcia, and I'm a junior at Santa Monica High School, as well as a representative of Orgullo Oaxaqueño, a sub-club of Legado Latino. Today, we come together with a shared purpose to support an important initiative that will directly impact the future of Latino students, their families, and our community as a whole. The funds we seek to raise will ensure that this graduation celebration is a truly meaningful and inspiring experience for our graduates. Your support will help provide graduation recognitions, decorations, food, and other essential arrangements to make this event unforgettable. More importantly, these funds will also be used to award scholarships to Latino students, empowering them to continue their education and pursue their dreams. But this effort is about more than just one event. By supporting this graduation, we send a powerful message that education matters, that every student deserves recognition for their hard work, and that as a community, we are committed to uplifting one another. We must continue fostering an environment where young Latinos see higher education not just as a possibility, but as an expectation. We cannot do this alone. We need your support, your generosity, and your commitment to making this celebration a reality. Every contribution brings us closer to our goal of securing ten thousand to honor these graduates and invest in their futures. Every effort makes a difference in shaping the lives of these students and the generations that will follow. Together, we can empower, inspire, celebrate, and uplift. Together, we can ensure that the Latino legacy of strength, determination, and excellence continues to thrive. Let us stand united in support of this vision and make it a reality. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. And before Ms. Cruz comes up, I'm going to call a few more names to line up. Denise Barton, John Alley, Jerry Rubin, and Wade Kelly. Ms. Cruz?
Hello, all. Good evening, honorable members of City Hall. My name is Itse Cruz. I'm seventeen years old and a senior at Santa Monica High School. Today, I will be speaking to you about Legado Latino, a community club at San Mo High, and why it matters. Legado Latino has been part of San Mo High for more than a decade and has been consistent in providing a great and open environment for everyone interested in their culture, in traditions, and history of Latin America. This is significant to the school, the students, and the families because it allows students to express themselves. It allows families to have the assurance that there is a place for their children, and it grants the school a higher diversity rate. Students part of Legado Latino are in touch with their heritage and deserve to be recognized and celebrated for their many contributions to the club and school all year long. We recognize the support we have from the city as students and residents of the city of Santa Monica. So with this in mind, I would like to present you all with a sincere request. Latino students comprise fifty-eight percent of all public schools in California, but at San Mo High, only thirty-five percent of Latino students are part of the student population. I stand here today and represent the voices of many Hispanic, Latino, and Latinx students, asking you all for your financial support in our graduation celebration and scholarships. We ask you for a donation of ten thousand dollars that will go towards these necessary events. Legado Latino encourages furthering education and grants scholarships to senior Latino students who have demonstrated leadership qualities both inside and outside of school, have plans to attend a four-year university, and have overcome hardships associated with their family background. Please keep in mind, it's important to be aware of the diversity in our community and validate the richness of each culture. Thank you all for your attention and consideration.
Thank you. Denise Barton?
Good evening. Tonight, let's talk about the contempt the city council has shows the residents and others. Besides the council deciding there are too many people wanting to speak, and your time is so much more important than ours, which means the public's commenting time is cut to one minute, then you stay out at closed session for more than two hours. And about the Santa Monica City Council spending two hours or more and then returning to closed session and then returning saying, "We're sorry we took so long," but because you do it almost every time, it seems like a defensive rationalization and an authentic. Then, so you understand a little more, it looks like you're doing it purposely to see how many people you can get to leave so there's less public comment later. Or another way to choose, you choose to show how much you despise hearing public comment is through your agenda management, such as the presently seated Santa Monica City Council have taken the categories on the agenda, like the public comment on individual items, like ordinances and resolutions, and made them consent calendar items. So instead of being able to speak on them as an individual item, you could only gloss over or touch on them, items in addition to all the other items on the consent calendar, since all the items are considered as one, showing how much disrespect you have for the residents and the lengths you'll go to disenfranchise them from being able to make public comment at the Santa Monica City Council meetings, again showing the contempt the city council has for the residents and others, their opinion and their opinions, especially when they don't coincide with yours. Thank you.
John Alley?
Santa Monica, I'm John Alley, co-founder of the Santa Monica Coalition, Save Cities. Tonight, I thank you, the public, for giving your notice to former city manager David White to resign. Why did he resign just months before he could have collected his pension and depart suddenly to Berkeley as a deputy city manager, half the salary he was making here? Stay tuned. Council members would not fire him. Privately, they said they wanted to. Publicly, they refused. We did it. The public pressure to resign sent him running. David White cost Fairfield over a million dollars for repayment of HUD funds he misused to the U.S. Treasury and to the whistleblower he fired. What will that cost Santa Monica? The next city manager must be properly vetted. We're asking additional staff to anonymously describe reassignments, retaliation, firings by David White or his colleagues. Many have come forward already. We'll include you in legal proceedings against David White personally and if needed, to the city. Your name, position, department will stay confidential. To our current councilman mayor, you sign up for this job as public servants, knowing what the pay and travel allowances were. Our city's broke. We need more money to fund police and restore two million back to the city fire department that was removed last year. With additional taxpayer dollars for travel expenses you're asking for, we could keep Ocean Park Library open an extra day. Participate in Japan sister city meetings on Zoom, or stop complaining and pay your own way to party. Put our city first, not yourselves. Invite the Japanese delegation here instead. We really need the business and sales revenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Rubin?
Thank you very, very much, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Mayor Protem, council city staff, police officers, and fellow Santa Monicans, Jerry Rubin. Longtime resident, a member of the Urban Forest Task Force. Just speaking for myself and just again inviting everyone to come to our Urban Forest Task Force meeting. We hold them every other month. It'll be held tomorrow in the community room of the Santa Monica Library at six thirty P.M. Come and meet our great arborists and staff, landscape staff, and the other people, and share your views about how we got to keep doing all the good stuff to work on our trees and care for them and protect them and plant more. There's going to be a lot of good activities focused on Arbor Day coming up, and so you'll hear all about that, tree giveaways and everything. On another topic, I wanted to support the Big Blue Bus. They're going to have a public meeting on Zoom and at the library coming up in the next few weeks. And I just think it's such a great deal. They haven't asked for a price increase in a long, long time. So I am supporting it. I think they wouldn't have asked unless it's really, really needed. They do a great job. I urge everyone to ride the bus. I still have my offer. Any senior that wants to ride the bus that hasn't done it before, I'll pay the first fare. And my goodness. So I support the Blue Bus, and I know you will too. Thank you.
Thank you. Wade Kelly? I'm sorry. And before Mr. Kelly speaks, I'm going to call up a few more names. Ashley Olson, Harvey Etter, Judith Serlin, and Eric Nunez. Mr. Kelly?
Wade Kelly, peaceful promenade protester and advocate for the homeless here in Santa Monica. I want to come, I'm here to thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for making a step for human rights by getting rid of the law that criminalizes sleeping bags and bedrolls for homeless human beings. That's cruel and inhumane, and we know it shouldn't be on the books. And I thank you sincerely. Congratulations for moving a step in the right direction. Of course, we know there are other laws on the books. There's no sitting, no standing on the promenade law that people can use. And by the way, around the topiaries, you can sit. Or you can sit around the topiaries and not be bothered at all. But that sitting and standing law, then you've got these little robots over on the promenade that are just sitting there all day. Why, what is that? Are we going to let robots have rights that human beings don't have? Those little robots that have a place to go and get charged up and cleaned up and all of the litter on our streets of rich people's toys making rich people money while we're pushing more poor people out into the streets? We have a time where we have people wanting to sell citizenship to the highest bidder and not let people that have been living here have their rights. We have to stand up for human rights right here in Santa Monica. California is the fifth largest economy in the world. We don't have to wait for the federal government to spend more money on public education and make sure that we build affordable housing. We can do it right here. And we all need to stand up for human rights. My name is Wade Kelly, K-E-L-L-E-Y. I will be live streaming from the promenade on YouTube and standing up for human rights. Thank you. Peace.
Thank you. Ashley Olson?
My name is Ashley Olson, and I am a current member of the city's Commission for the Environment. I'm here once again to urge you to prioritize our beaches in response to the environmental damage caused by the Palisades fire. For two months, the county has assured the public our beaches are safe, but those claims are not backed up by thorough testing. I started collecting samples fifty-three days before the Department of Public Health took its first sand sample. Here are some of the most alarming findings based on the California human health screening levels. Arsenic, one hundred and twenty-eight times the safe level, a known carcinogen, and developmental toxin. Mercury, eighty-eight times the safe level, a neurotoxin with risk for children. And chromium, including hexavalent chromium made famous by Aaron Brockovich, twenty-one times the safe level. This is an environmental disaster, a public health crisis, and it requires leadership. But aside from posts by the mayor, this council has been silent. Meanwhile, council is focused on raising campaign contribution limits, designating parking lots as surplus land, and fast-tracking development, decisions that benefit political agendas, not public health. But what about the beach? What about the children who live, work, and play there? What about the businesses that rely on a clean, safe sand and water? I'm asking you to stop grooming the beaches. It's spreading pollution. Remove remaining fire debris and clean our storm drains, a persistent source of ocean pollution. Implement solutions from the feasibility studies conducted under Measure V. Consult real environmental experts in coastal contamination. Have a real plan for the next storm, which could wash more fire debris back on our shoreline. Finally, the city has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars installing netting under the pier to keep out birds being blamed for the poor water quality. I'm going to save you some money. It's not bird poop that's the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Harvey Etter?
Hello, good evening. My name's Harvey Etter. I'm speaking for myself. Public Solar Power Coalition, Tenants Association at thirteen, what is it, forty-eight, twenty-eight, Second Street. It's Step Up. In the month, I run out of food. I don't have enough to eat, all right? Had some help on and off from EBT. Got some new food stamps. Five years ago, out on the West Side here, we were getting sixteen bucks if you had disability check SSI and stuff, right? It's like the two-hundred-and-eighty and been that for people on the street. A family of four gets eighteen hundred. That's four-hundred-and-fifty per, then usually a lot higher inside and smaller kids. That's fifty percent higher than people on the street. That's discrimination, okay? But from one-point-seven trillion now to half a trillion, the Republicans are cutting this from agriculture. Okay, we've got real big problems. Musk, he was here, and he got, some of his goodwill was, they thought he was solar Santa Monica when he was selling solar with Tesla, all right? Okay, PayPal, he sold a hundred million. CNBC said thirty, forty million is what he told his wife. They divorced, got married back again. When he tried to sell the Saudis for fifty-four billion, after they bone sawed the guy and put him in acid, he made ten, twenty, and the SEC took him off the board, rechanged his board. When Avis, a hundred billion dollars, he got, and into the bid league. Okay, we got, okay, we got to take out Musk and him, and this is, he says, Social Security is a Ponzi scheme. He says emotions is a downfall of Western civilization, empathy, all right? Enough, okay? We got to take him out, and we got to take Trump out, and we got to do it. There's three, ten billion dollars, three hundred million the governor wanted. That money's supposed to be for climate, the Justice Department. We spent forty-two billion.
Thank you. Judith Serlin? Thank you, Harvey. Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Judith?
Hi, my name is Judith Serlin, and I'm from Teamsters. Tonight, we have Teamsters in the house. I would like everybody who's a Teamster to stand up so they can, you can see who they are. We've got people here from beaches and harbors. We've got people here from the BBB. We've got people here from the promenade. They're here to talk about their future. They're here to talk about their needs and their wants in the city. You've heard me speak about the needs of the city workers. You've heard me speak about what I believe the needs of the city departments are. Tonight, people will speak for themselves and talk about what they're going through every day at work. We urge you to listen. We thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Judith. And before Mr. Nunez starts, I'm going to call up a few more names. Luis Ochoa, Sergio Ortega, Christian Pennell, and Pedro Paredes Jr. Mr. Nunez?
Hi, my name is Eric Nunez. I've worked for the city. I've worked in the city a total of about twenty-four years, and seventeen of those years have been for this city. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. The city of Santa Monica has long been known for taking care of its employees, but that reputation is quickly fading. Over the years, we've seen a significant downgrade in both pay and benefits. The city, along with Big Blue Bus, cannot retain employees, and it's no wonder why. People are leaving for better paying opportunities elsewhere. Most of us can't even afford to live in the city we work for. We're commuting from far away, spending an increased amount on gas, vehicle wear and tear. Yet, the city continues to spend money on things like fancy water fountains, artistic center pieces, instead of investing in its workforce. This lack of investment is affecting morale and making it harder to keep up with demands. As we approach the World Cup and Olympics, tourists will see more than just the beauty of Santa Monica. They'll see needles on the streets, homeless in the alleyways, and feces on the sidewalk. Who needs a well-trained, stable workforce to tackle these issues? But how come we, when the city is a revolving door for employees? In the last five to six years, we've lost half of our Big Blue Bus mechanics to cities offering better wages. When I got hired, I remember there used to be about three hundred people applying for one position. We used to have to do it at the civic center. Now, we can barely get a handful of people to apply here. During COVID, we were there, keeping the buses running and our city moving, even as we put our own lives at risk. We showed up for Santa Monica when the city needed us the most. And it's time the city shows up.
Thank you, Mr. Nunez. You said we're going to do happy hands. Luis Ochoa?
How you doing, everyone? Hi, my name is Luis Ochoa. I've been employed for the city of Santa Monica for Big Blue Bus for twenty-five years. I'm here to quickly talk about the importance of retention and competitive wages. As everyone here knows, we all have the struggle with inflation. I want this, I want to see this beautiful city I have spent the last twenty-five years to take a huge step into investing and retention of our future young workforce that's providing them with equitable and competitive wages. It's very concerning to see so many talented young coworkers come for a year or two and leave due to other cities providing better wages. With my department at the Big Blue Bus, we are turning to a new age of running the city's transportation department all-electric. New technology and a new step forward into the future. I urge you to please take care of the future of this great city by providing its workforce with the necessary wages for all its employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Sergio Ortega?
Good evening, city council. My name is Sergio Ortega. I've been here twenty-one years with the Big Blue Bus Maintenance Department. I just want to say, from the first day I started here with Big Blue Bus, that was the greatest place, you know, to retire from. I've seen things change from people wanting to stay here to people wanting to leave and going somewhere else, for example, the LA, LA Fire. And I'm starting to see a lot of these hires just basically coming and going for training. And that's where we're basically, we are. We're a trading facility for this, for the newcomers that are here. We're not being able to retain anybody because they're going to competitive salaries somewhere else. And we spend a lot of time in training, schooling, in these individuals. For what? So they can go somewhere else? I mean, just look at the big picture, you know? We need to, we need to raise salaries to retain these people here. And, you know, I've been here twenty-one years. I'm about to, I'm about to retire in four or more. You know, a lot of us are ready to retire. You know, who's going to be here to maintain these new buses? You know, we have LNG, CNG, and then soon to be electrical buses. And that's a new technology. We can't keep up with it. And with us, a lot of us retiring, you guys need to focus on the new generation that's coming in to maintain these buses. Not just that, but we also keep, we keep fire trucks. We keep the fire department going. You know, I hate to say, I know the Palisades happened, like all these, all the fire trucks that were parked out in the city, in LA City. You know, I'm just saying, we should invest. And, you know, we take all these, this town. You know, two years, two and a half years ago, we lost twenty-two mechanics to other sources, twenty-two mechanics. And let me tell you, they're very talented mechanics. Now, you know, nowadays, nobody wants to get into this field. It's sad to say, but this is where we're at now. So I'm just, I'm just hoping you guys look at the future of the city of Santa Monica and hopefully we can negotiate something decent for the future because...
Thank you. Before Mr. Pennell comes up, I'm also going to call up a few more names to line up. Christian Lopez, Miguel Montavo, and Stephanie. And then just a reminder to keep your cell phones off and refrain from talking so we can hear the speakers. Mr. Pennell?
Hi, how's everyone doing tonight? My name is Christian Pennell. I've been working for the city of Santa Monica for one year. And I'd just like to give my perspective as someone who's just got into that field. First of all, my coworkers are great. They are a wealth of knowledge, and they do try to, you know, teach the new generation. And I've noticed that there's a lot of, what's it called? They lose motivation and things of that nature because, you know, they're not getting the support that they need in order to continue to help further the future of Santa Monica Big Blue Bus. And I'm here to show them that even though I've just been here for a year, that I'm here to support them and understand where they're coming from. And it'd be great if, you know, you guys could show that support to them as well and that we can build a better future for Big Blue Bus.
Thank you. Pedro Paredes?
Evening, city council and mayor. My name is Pedro Paredes. I've been with the Big Blue Bus for the last eight years. I'm a former veteran, but please don't say thank you for my service. Leave it for my brothers and sisters who never came back or lost limbs. If you do, aside quick, if you ever... If you do, aside quick, if you ever wanna say thank you to somebody, support our vets by giving them good medical care. I wanna reiterate what my, my union members have said. This is just a turnstile. Find it in your hearts, find it in your minds. We boast about being one of the best, uh, like it says right here, the nation's number one. No, but we're here for the people. And for, to be here for the people, we need to be compensated. We work out there, if we have a road call, we're dealing with a lot of things. We're dealing with traffic as long as, as well as the bus drivers. We're dealing with people trying to do us harm. We're trying to focus on fixing the buses. We do the best we can. I admire a lot of my, my coworkers who are still here, some of us. I'm fifty-four years old. I'm looking to retirement pretty soon. But like my previous union member said, brother, it's hard to retain. I, I hope we see it. See the Big Blue Bus for what it is, for bringing, bringing electric buses. I've worked on, with hybrid buses. I know what it takes. It takes a lot of smarts and a lot of wanting to work at it. There's much, not much to say right now, but if you wanna keep the Big Blue Bus being number one, you know, if you wanna celebrate us every year with, you know, uh, an award, please celebrate us. But a bus, I don't wanna live this, I live close, but for my other brothers, they can't live thirty minutes away. They live forty, fifty, seventy miles away, and they still make it.
Thank you. Christian Lopez.
Good evening. Um, I, I'm just here because, um, uh, there, there's a broken pipe that was on a cross street of Fourteenth and Michigan. And it severed two of my tires. The second time it happened, that's when I noticed it and dust and debris almost hit a pedestrian in the face from the, um, pressure, um, being released from the tire. Anyhow, um, I, I just went through the different departments down there. I get no response. I got referred to somebody, then got referred to somebody else, no response. So then they told me to come here or, or do something in the, uh, within the website, which I did today in order to, um, see if they can fix that issue and, and, um, compensate me for the tire's damage. The, the, the curve where I parked to, I took photos. I already submitted, uploaded, downloaded, uploaded the images to the, um, the person I was supposed to be in contact with. Not much response. They don't wanna be liable. They told me it's the building management's responsibility. They had me back and forth like in a monk in the middle situation. But what I noticed today, that, that pipe, they fixed it. I asked the building management, they said they didn't have nothing to do with it. So I'm assuming the city did go and fix it, but how come they don't wanna be responsible to compensate my tires or anybody else that damages their vehicle's tires parking through there? So like, like what's up, what's going on? Do I gotta go kick doors or flip tables in order to get some, some attention for, for this? Or, I mean, what am I, what is somebody supposed to do?
I'm gonna have our assistant city manager step out with you just to make sure we get your, get that taken care of.
Yeah, I, I went through the department, no, no, not much response. Nobody wants to be responsible, so like, please do something about it.
We'll have someone step out and talk to you right now. Thank you. Miguel Montalvo, before you begin, Miguel, I've got Stephanie with a one behind it, Jonathan Foster, and Zoe Montaner. Mr. Montalvo.
Yeah, I'm here to speak on behalf of the underdog that's been getting the, the bunt end of the, uh, the greed, the, the meanness, the, the lack of chivalry and soul and wits because of jealousy and whatever other emotions, cuz every good guy needs a bad guy to ease the pain of their inadequacies. So the, I'm here on the behalf of me, uh, not first and foremost, but nevertheless, you know, as, um, a history of repeat, if I haven't seen any familiar faces when I asked for an independent investigative committee to be called in over the Service Center, OPCC, when I was throwing out on my birthday with Jessica Biel, not the actress who went to Justin Timberlake, but the, the, the umbrella of Jessica Biel, cuz if you mention Fifty One Fifty and there's a whole lot of disappearances and pseudo-psychiatric treatment forms going on with, uh, setting me up for failure after failure and make a play me about, uh, going to jail for almost a year. I can't get that out of my mind. And there's a lot of stuff, man, can't contain these, these things, I'm still getting anybody. Do you have any, have I given you stuff that should be on camera, right? But they have credentials, so God bless them.
Thank you, Stephanie. Is there Stephanie? No, Jonathan Foster.
Hello, I'm Jonathan Foster, Council, hi. Right now, we're doing public comment. And all we can do is comment about past council meetings. And today, though, on the docket, you've got several things here that we, we are not gonna hear the dialogue, the, the target language. But, but you, you, everything, you know, we have to, like, make up, like, what is, you're gonna say and what directions. And I've seen this go on for several years here. We're, we're in government, we're, I'm hoping you guys could restore government here in Santa Monica where we hear each item and then we hear the dialogue, the target language, and then, and you talk and talk, go to this. And then the people get to come up and, and go over your dialogue. That's called government. And it's not happening here in Santa Monica for, like, since twenty-twenty, I guess. And it, and it, for about six years before that, I saw that thing, uh, um, that I, I wasn't very happy. I take that back, excuse me. I saw this person, Gleam Davis, that I wasn't very happy with always being the one that would kinda go around and be the one that preset this up to knock it all out. You think I wasn't watching? She's dirty. And we don't have real government right now in Santa Monica. You're gonna go over a bunch of things that people are gonna comment, but they're not ever gonna hear. See, in a court of law, you have, uh, exam and cross-examination. And so what you're doing is you're making law and they're gonna do exam and cross-examination if you offend the law. But here, where we're supposed to have exam and cross-examination, it, it, it's gone. So I'm asking, could you restore that, please, U7? Thanks.
Thank you. Zoe Montaner.
You were missed at the last city council meeting. Thank you for being back. I was at the Board of Supervisors meeting today. It was very interesting because, um, on the set matter, um, two, we were discussing the report on the county's implementation for the people experiencing homelessness. And Supervisor Hand said something, and it's a message for cities. Supervisor Hand says that the cities can take on the mantle for people who age out of the safe space for youth. And I brought this to the discussion because as a former student at Santa Monica College that was at risk of losing her apartment and lost her apartment, Santa Monica College did nothing to protect my housing. And then actually inflicted even more pain when I was, um, a part of a department that was supposed to protect me. So this is the message from the county. And it's important to really pay attention to what the county says if we are going to receive money from the county for this particular issue of homelessness. Because if it was not for my wit and my perseverance, I would be in the same situation again. But because I was able to really press the right buttons and to outmaneuver my former landlord, I'm able to stay housed. And we need to really pay attention of the ethics of this type of behavior. There were no members of Santa Monica College at that meeting today advocating for students, not a single one. Anastasia Foster, where are you? You're the former rent control, uh, person that left holes open for landlords to abuse the system like Sean Besser and Marie Maurice did, giving the city.
Thank you. So that concludes public comment on special agenda items.
That's correct. We'll now move on to item two, special agenda items. Item two A, proclamation for Arts Month.
I'd like to call forward Sophia Klatscher from, um, our cultural affairs manager and Jennifer Ulrich, our principal librarian.
Good evening. Are we ready? Okay. Good evening, Mayor Negrete, Mayor Protem Terosus, and members of the city council. I am Sophia Klatscher, cultural affairs manager, and tonight we are recognizing April as Arts, uh, Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month in California, a time to celebrate arts and culture in our community and advocate for its support. Santa Monica has participated since 2019, when Senator Ben Allen, with support from Californians for the Arts, helped establish this official recognition. Through free events, resources, and advocacy opportunities, the goal is to engage arts advocates and raise awareness of the impact of the arts within communities across the state. The local launch of Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month will be a celebration in partnership with Arts for L.A. at the Annenberg Community Beach House on April sixth from two to four, and we hope you can join us. Here in Santa Monica, we have a rich history of art support and programming. Every year, we have committed funds to strengthen the cultural ecosystem with grants, opportunities for nonprofits and artists. Our Art of Recovery program pairs artists with local community organizations to enhance and reflect our neighborhoods and bring us together. The municipal public art program enlivens our civic spaces with destination artworks and opportunities for contemplation and inquiry. I wanted to share a few more thoughts about the importance of arts and culture. Arts and culture promotes personal well-being, even personal transformations. Seventy-eight percent of Americans say that their arts are a positive experience in a troubled world. Sixty-nine percent of the population believe the arts lift me up beyond everyday experiences and seventy-one percent feel the arts give them pure pleasure to experience and participate in. Arts and culture builds empathy and understanding. Seventy-two percent of Americans believe the arts provide shared experience with people of different races, ethnicities, ages, beliefs, identities, gender, political and national origin. And seventy-three percent agree that the arts help me understand other cultures better. This is who we are, and this is why we come together. April is also National Poetry Month. It's my pleasure to welcome Santa Monica Public Library Principal Librarian, Jennifer Ulrich.
Thank you. Thank you, Sophia. Good evening, Mayor Negrete, Mayor Protem Terosus, and Sydney council members. My name is Jen Ulrich. I'm the principal librarian overseeing community engagement and programming for the library. As we continue celebrating April as Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month in California, it is also an opportunity to shine a light on yet another powerful form of creative expression, poetry. National Poetry Month, launched by the Academy of American Poets in nineteen ninety-six and also celebrated in the month of April, is now the largest literary celebration in the world. Each April, tens of millions of readers, students, educators, librarians, and poets come together to celebrate the essential place poetry holds in our lives. It's a time to recognize the unique ability of poetry to inspire, challenge, and connect us. Here in Santa Monica, we are fortunate to have a poet laureate who brings those ideals to life through community collaboration, creative engagement, and a deep love of the written word. We are equally fortunate to be in a community that values literature, learning, and libraries. Join us Tuesday, April twenty-second, at the main library from three-thirty to five-thirty P.M. as we celebrate Arts, Culture, Creativity Month, National Poetry Month, and Earth Day. We have camera obscura artist-in-residence Rafaelle Cohen Bakri presenting a collage workshop incorporating recycled and repurposed materials. And poet laureate Anne Karmak is presenting poems for the planet and interactive poetry workshop honoring the earth. In addition, we'll have the city of Santa Monica Urban Forest Team presenting a family-friendly talk on the importance of trees. Members from the Santa Monica Community Gardens will also be on hand to talk about native plants, and there'll be an opportunity to speak to a bee specialist. But tonight, I am honored to introduce Anne Karmak, Santa Monica's inaugural poet laureate. Anne is a multidisciplinary artist whose work includes a wide range of media, including painting, photography, filmmaking, storytelling, screenwriting, poetry, and performing. So please join me in welcoming Anne, who will now read the proclamation she has written in honor of both Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month and National Poetry Month.
Thank you. Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Okay. Whereas, art in Santa Monica seeks to speak and lead and create conversations, building spaces, meaning, and relationships as it goes. Whereas, art in Santa Monica stands on stages and lives on the page using brushes and colors and sound to serve the unique needs of individuals while watching out for the common good. Whereas, art in Santa Monica asks us to stop and stand still, to stay present, to celebrate the bold and beautiful moment before moving on. Whereas, art in Santa Monica gives us a place to put what we've learned, what we know, what we hope to create, a collective of community members making brave work in a vibrant city that strives to uplift, support, and inspire its inhabitants. Whereas, art in Santa Monica asks us to tell the truth, to take a stand, to use our voices to say the most helpful and healing things we can think of. Whereas, art in Santa Monica is an ally of change born from an ever-evolving discussion that unites rather than divides us and invites all of us to openly participate in an exchange of energy, inspiration, and information. Whereas, art in Santa Monica continues to preserve and nurture the human spirit through its festivals and public projects and its commitment to creating safe spaces in which we can honestly share questions, concerns, and solutions. Whereas, art in Santa Monica ennobles and encourages us by begging us to be courageous in our work and to carry on the lengthy tradition of all the creative professionals who have come here to live and build things before us. Whereas, art in Santa Monica, as curiosity's most loyal companion, asks us to lean in, to learn, and to listen to each other through the bold work that we hang on the walls, the words that we write, and the projects we produce for our public spaces. Whereas, art in Santa Monica comes from every corner of our community and reflects the cultures we come from, shows us where we stand, and creates a path of possibility that points in the direction of where we can go next. Whereas, art in Santa Monica grows and gives back what it borrows tenfold, creating a more conscious and compassionate world. Wherever we bring and share and build our art, we bring hope.
Now, therefore, I, Mayor Negrete, Mayor of Santa Monica, on behalf of the members of the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Arts and National Poetry Month. So, yay! We'll come and take a picture here.
Item twelve, I'm sorry. Item two B, proclamation for Trans Day of Visibility.
All right, good evening. I have the honor and privilege of doing the proclamation for Trans Day of Visibility. If Miles Friesen. If Miles Freeson could step forward. Miles is a Public Works Administrative Analyst, who will introduce an author, Sidney, to read an original proclamation.
Great, thank you. Good evening, honorable mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, and my community. My name is Miles Freeson. I'm an out and proud trans and queer employee of the City of Santa Monica, where I've worked for nine years, not by chance but by strategy. I studied macro-level social work and believe deeply in the power of local government to shape policy that protects those most in need. Tonight, I have the deep honor of standing before you as we recognize Trans Day of Visibility for the first time with a city proclamation. The writer of whom, Sidney Rogers, I will have the honor of introducing, which I'll do in just a moment. First, I want to say thank you to you up here, to council, to city leadership, for making this happen. You made this happen. It's historic, and it's also personal. Trans Day of Visibility is about recognizing and celebrating the lives, contributions, and joy of transgender and gender-diverse people everywhere. Trans Day of Visibility has always been a complicated holiday, and this year even more so. You see, the increased visibility of my community has rarely led to better outcomes in the daily lives of trans people. This is especially true for my BIPOC, trans siblings, and trans immigrants. Five years ago, there were fewer than 150 anti-trans bills being introduced across this country in legislatures not dissimilar to this one. Last year, there was nearly 700. Today, there, in 2025, we have over 800 active bills. We're in March. Many of these are aimed at youth, some of them are aimed at adults, our health care, our right to simply exist, to hold jobs, to get housing. Tonight, the City of Santa Monica is not just acknowledging us with its proclamation, which is wonderful, it's also standing with us. You see, there's a resolution being heard later this evening, and it's more than symbolic or performative. It is a strategic and meaningful commitment to protecting access to gender-affirming care here in Santa Monica and ensuring that city resources will not be used to support investigations that target our community. Its bold and necessary stance rooted in equity, compassion, humanity, and the understanding that our right to exist and access care shouldn't be up for debate, ever, just like none of yours should be. To my trans, non-binary, and gender-nonconforming siblings, however you need to show up right now, whether loud or quiet, visible or not, online or in community, in protest or in rest, it's all valid, you are valid. These are challenging times. Hold one another close. To my city, please keep blazing new trails to support our community through housing, jobs, health care, legal assistance, even state-level policies. Yes, you may not have a huge trans population here in the city, largely because a lot of us can't afford to live here. We're more likely than any other subset of a community to live under the poverty line. But what you do have in droves is a powerful platform. The stances and policies you enact here in this chamber can and will have a reverberating impact on other cities that are also wrestling with what strategic resistance can look like in this moment in time: how to care, how to protect. Santa Monica has the chance to be the model of resistance, care, and leadership in this regard. This is that moment, and you're already doing that real work, and I'm so grateful to you for taking it on. It is now my immense honor and privilege to introduce someone who embodies that spirit of resistance and trans brilliance in our community every day. The writer of our Trans Day of Visibility proclamation for 2025, Ms. Sidney Rogers. Sidney Rogers is a visionary leader, advocate, artist, and changemaker, a proud Black trans femme. Sidney has spent more than 30 years weaving together performance, policy, and community organizing. She's the vice chair of the L.A. County LGBTQ+ Commission and the program manager for the Trans Economic Empowerment Project at the L.A. LGBT Center. She's also our partner in getting our scholarship fund that you helped fund four, four years ago into the hands of individuals who have gotten their paperwork done and just need that extra help to get it across the board. It makes a huge difference. Her work is shifting entire systems, ensuring not only that trans and non-binary people are employed, but they are thriving in sustainable and affirming careers. As the founder of Miss B Enterprises and the legendary drag persona, Miss Barbecue, Sidney uses storytelling, drag, and education as tools of liberation. She's navigated homelessness, incarceration, and systemic exclusion, and she embodies the fight for justice, dignity, and liberation. Whether on stage, in the streets, or at the policy table, she's building a future where trans people are not just visible, but valued, protected, and free. Please, join me in warmly welcoming the incomparable Sidney Rogers. Oh, my goodness. You're fine. There's a stare there. Hi, everyone, council members, mayor, those here in the audience. I'm honored. My name is Sidney Rogers, and I stand before you as a Black trans woman, a testament to resilience, authenticity, and the enduring power of our community. Today, we gather not just to be seen, but to affirm what has always been true: we belong here, because we've always been here. Whereas transgender, nonconforming, and intersex people have walked this land long before it was called Santa Monica, before borders were drawn, before laws attempted to define who we are or who we could be, we acknowledge that we stand on unceded Tongva land, where indigenous peoples, including Two-Spirit and gender expansive ancestors, have long held space, identity, and culture. And whereas across the United States, we witness a surge in legislative and executive actions aimed at erasing the identities and rights of TGI individuals. From executive orders attempting to define gender as an immutable binary to state bills proposing punitive measures against those who live their truth, these actions seek to deny our humanity and push us into the shadows. And whereas, despite these challenges, we rise. We build, we create, we survive, and we thrive. We turn pain into purpose, barriers into bridges, and exclusion into a force that only makes us stronger. And whereas visibility is not merely just being seen, but about being acknowledged, respected, and protected. True belonging does not come from asking for a seat at the table, it comes from knowing we've always had a place and refusing to be pushed out. And whereas Santa Monica has the opportunity, not just today, but every day, to ensure that TGI people are not just visible, but valued. The fight for our rights is deeply tied to housing justice, racial justice, disability justice, and economic equity, because, as Fannie Lou Hamer reminds us, "none of us are free until all of us are free." And whereas we honor the strength, history, and contributions of TGI people in Santa Monica, and from those who have lived here for generations, for those seeking safety and affirmation, we are artists, educators, elders, and youth. We are the past, the present, and the future of this city. And...
Now, therefore, I, Lana Negrete, Mayor of the City of Santa Monica, on behalf of the members of the City Council, do hereby proclaim March 31st, 2025, as Trans Day of Visibility in Santa Monica. We stand in solidarity with transgender, gender nonconforming, and intersex people, individuals nationwide, recognizing their struggles, celebrating their contributions, and committing to the ongoing fight for justice. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready to take a picture again, right, all of us?
Picture time.
Well, Ma, move on to Item 3, Public Input, on items under Special Agenda Items, Consent Calendar, and Closed Session Only. No public input is permitted on ordinances for second reading and adoption. It looks like we have 11 speakers on this item.
Great, and I'm going to call a few names to line up. Lori Nafshen, Denise Barton, Anne Bowman, and Susan Jane. Hi, Lori.
Hi. Hi, everyone. Hi, Lane. Lori Nafshen, Santa Monica resident, here to speak about Item 5B. Honorable council members, in the event you are thinking that this project to save the civic is driven by a bunch of seniors, I just want to give you some information about Gen Z, millennials, and how they are spending their income on travel and concerts. According to the New York Times, March 5th, 2025, and I'm just going to paraphrase here, a survey by AAA and Bread Financial found that Gen Z and millennials are willing to spend more and more on travel and travel farther to attend live concert events than older generations. The entire piece is about Gen Z, millennials, and how much time, money, and energy they're willing to give to attend live music concerts, including out-of-state and international travel. According to the New York Times, March 12th, "Audience Snapshot Four Years After Shutdown: A Mixed Recovery." Theater is down 17%. There are sadly 4,800 fewer movie screens. Orchestra ticket sales are up 2%, but opera is still struggling. Museum attendance is mixed. Sports fans are back. Pop concerts are up 65%. Santa Monica is a destination city. If we build it, they will come. Lastly, well, let me just, I just want to throw a few more things in here. A stellar, experienced, competent group who knows how to program a successful venue like RPG is key, and guess what? They really want to do this. Just a few little factoids about the RPG group. The companies in the RPG consortium are large, well-funded, and well-established in the entertainment world. Live Nation, a publicly listed company, has over 6,000 employees.
Thank you. Denise Barton.
Good evening. Let me gloss over, did you pull Item 4F because you severely overestimated the population? Or do you not want to admit your policies are driving people away? Or is that the plan? And on Item 4G, accepted freebies or gifts and gratuities? Doesn't that look like your vote has already been bought and paid for? And that the parties in advance are fringe benefits when they're free? And as a customer, if you have to get freebies, what kind of customer are you representing in the city to be? And finally, Item 4E, the resolution affirming gender-affirming health care. Why do we need this? Aren't there already sufficient protection on this issue? Which was, as was noted in the staff report, or is the funding being threatened and you want the residents to be financially responsible for the people's personal choices? Or is this action to take more resources from the city attorney's office for this issue? You know, you've made the city broke, right? And regarding requiring gender studies in schools, wouldn't that be comparable to requiring religious studies in nonparochial schools? Here's the thought: since the present children who can do reading and math is at a grade level, and the 4th and 8th grades is significantly low, maybe more attention needs to go to basic skills in school and not required ideology. Thank you.
Thank you. Young Bowman.
Good evening. I'm Anne Bowman. I'm a Recreation and Parks Commissioner, but I'm speaking in my individual capacity tonight, and I believe Bee Demlahas is donating some time to me. Thank you, Bee. On March 8th, you all had your budget study session, and you selected three top priorities for you as a council. Economic growth, opportunity, and development is listed as number one, and then you elevated that priority even further by creating an Economic Development Council ad hoc committee. And I really approve of that. Then, just two weeks ago, when you considered the RPG Civic Auditorium-City deal, you received 178 pro-civic auditorium written public comments, and I don't think you get your council meeting books anymore, but this is what that looks like. This is, that is a lot of people who care about this project, who want to see the auditorium come back, and who took the time to write in to you. And by the way, I didn't print them out. It's just a visual aid. So, what does, because I'm sustainable, what does economic development look like, folks? At this point, it looks like moving this deal along as fast as you can, as unencumbered as you can. It is saying, our arms are outstretched to you. Thank you for bringing this amazing deal to our city. You're not asking for any money. How can we help you do this efficiently, quickly? What do you need? We are so full of gratitude. Thank you so much. By the way, we've got a wine and cheese party down for everyone to get to know each other in the City Hall courtyard. Seriously, let's get council, let's get RPG key staff, let's get city staff together. That's what nurturing a relationship, nurturing an economic relationship, making economic development happen, which is what we really want to see. That 178 pages of public comment. Also, because the public does care so much about this, this is our civic space. There's a chance to bring civic space back to our city, plus this amazing growth engine. I hope, to the extent you can, let's make further discussion public as opposed to in closed session. And I just want to say to you, I mean, last time I was here, I said this deal is a unicorn. Now, I'm going to call it Moby Dick. That great white whale surged out of the sea, and it's right here on the dais, and all you have to do is say, "Thank you, let's do it." And I guess that's really it. Let's just lay down the gold-plated welcome mat and get this done fast, maybe even a time for the Olympics. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. Susan Jane, and before you go up, Ms. Jane, I'm going to call some other names. Jerry Rubin, Christine Pa, Abby Adams, and Patrick Adams.
Hi, my name is Dr. Susan Patel-Jane, and I'm a Santa Monica resident. I am the former co-president of the Santa Monica High School Orchestra Parents Association, and was the person who took the kids on a five-city tour of China several years ago. I'm a China specialist and been at UCLA for 20 years, but my, and I'm on the Arts Commission, but I'm here tonight as a private citizen, as an arts educator. From, I have worked in the city about 30 years, producing the work of artists, as well as working in arts education-giving platforms. This, we have an opportunity here with the Civic Auditorium that is just phenomenal. Please don't, please don't blow this. This is really an incredible opportunity. Two weeks ago, I was at Santa Monica High School for Stairway to the Stars. That event is typically held at the Civic Auditorium. On that day, there were 3,000 people, there were three performances, 3,000 people in attendance. There were seven orchestras, five concert bands, five choirs, two jazz bands, and a mariachi program, a 5th grade through high school mariachi program that was created, that class that made it possible at Sam Ojai was made it possible at Sam Ojai, was created through a partnership between SMMUSD, Sounds Like LA, which is a local world music nonprofit started by UCLA grads, and Santa Monica College. And believe it or not, that, right now, that class is the only mariachi class in all of LA County, and it's right here in Santa Monica. So Sophia, a few moments ago, talked about the cultural, the arts ecosystem. This RPG, the Civic Auditorium, opens up an amazing educational opportunity for our students in our district. My understanding is that some of the artists might be here in residency. That connection with UCLA has now launched a BA program in music industry. LA is the home to the, one of the largest video game industry, which
Thank you, Ms. Jane. Jerry Rubin.
Thank you again, Mayor and council members. I want to again speak on that same issue. We just honored the artists today and poets. My gosh. We're a city of culture. We're a city of art. All the education that could take place there and the lectures of prominent people. We're a city of education. We know there's tight budget, but you're not going to touch the money we give to the school district. And you shouldn't think that, well, if we get rid of the civic, that'll help save the city. In all respect, that's not fair. It's not fair to even think about getting rid of our libraries either. We can do better than that. We could find ways to help our budget without getting rid of these unbelievably important institutions. So I know you'll think about it and do the right thing. I have all the confidence in the world. And once we all agree, that's when the big energy and the big money and the big people start flowing in. When they see we're all unified and have the courage to do what's right, they're going to get behind us. So that's all I want to say. I'm so glad we have this excellent opportunity to save that wonderful civic auditorium. Thank you.
Thank you. Former council member Christine Pah on the other end of the dais.
My favorite end of the dais. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Before I say my little spiel, I want to echo Anne Bowman's sentiments. She succinctly verbalized what I know we are all thinking. So thank you, Anne. As I'm sure you've already heard from many others, the opportunity before us to allow Tim Sexton and his esteemed partners to revitalize the Civic Center is essential to both economic recovery and the long-term future of our city. However, what I'd like to emphasize today is that a quick sale of this property would merely serve as a short-term solution to the city's current challenges. What a revitalized, state-of-the-art Civic Center could offer, not just today, but for years to come, is invaluable. It will serve not only as a cultural hub for our community, but also as a destination that will draw thousands of visitors for intimate performances by A-list entertainers. With many of these performers based in LA, there is potential for residencies, which provide a significant boost to our local economy. Over the past week, while serving on jury duty, yes, I've been down the street, I've parked in front of the Civic Center every single day, and have the opportunity to truly envision and dream about what a gift this could be for our city's recovery. I ask you to do the same. Please, become a tourist in the city you've sworn to surf. Visit the Civic Center, walk the grounds, and allow yourselves to dream of what it could be. With the right vision and commitment, the space has the potential to become a vibrant, enchanting destination for everyone. So please, I beg, give it a chance. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Abby Adams. And before you start, Ms. Adams, I'm going to call up a few more names. So we have Patrick Adams, and then Shalay, Marianne LaGuardia, and Zoe Montaner.
Hi, good evening. I'm here to speak on 5B. I have not been in these chambers since I used to come and advocate for the Santa Monica Public School System, raised millions of dollars for that. My three children and Barry Snell is the only one I recognize on this panel tonight. But I am honored to be here and speaking on about the Civic Center. I want to quote, and I want you to guess who said this, "Reimagining the site, on the other hand, could solve many of our city's immediate financial problems while setting us on a stronger economic footing for decades to come." That quote came from Councilmember Zwik in this article that I read in the Santa Monica Daily Press, opposing the development. And it's the reimagining, it's the redeveloping, it's not saving what was, it's not preserving what was. The spirit of what was is reimagining it for the future. I have three children, they all went through Santa Monica Public Schools. The special nature of Santa Monica's schools was building community, and a huge part, as spoken so eloquently by our former leader of the music program, was the cultural, the arts, the music programs. Our dearest friends come from those days. And the idea, I used to be in the entertainment business, I was wondering why Councilman Zwik's father, or last name sounded so familiar. I happen to represent your father in Marshall Herskowitz back in the day at CAA. So, great, I would assume that your dad's a big proponent of the arts. So my quest here tonight is to bring back community to Santa Monica through this amazing cultural institution. We've had a box at the Hollywood Bowl for decades. I would give my left arm to not, to give up that box and not have to travel, you know, to Hollywood and have all of that business and community here in Santa Monica. So thank you very much. I appreciate your time, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Patrick Adams.
Hi, good evening. I'm also here to talk about item 5B. I don't understand why the council is reopening this issue after there was already a unanimous vote to enter into an agreement to renovate the Civic Auditorium. It's a prime example of the architectural style for which Southern California is famous, that exuberant, optimistic, mid-century modern style that is more popular and important today than ever. And I especially don't understand it because this agreement will do it in a way that'll bring world-class renovation and management to a historic venue, and do it at, what I can tell, is no cost to the city. So reopening the issue is an example of the behavior for which governments are so often criticized. Lots of talk and no action. So here's a chance to act and do something with a city asset that's been idle for over a decade, and do something with nothing but upside for the city. But it seems like some people want to stop again and talk again, potentially going back to square one. Now, I've read commentary that we should go back to square one because the civic is old news, that it's irrelevant to anyone under 50. That's ridiculous. And I'm not just saying that because I'm over 50. If you use that line of reasoning, Santa Monica should not have saved the pier in the 70s, because it was already 60 years old by then. Or if you lose that line of reasoning, Santa Monica shouldn't have saved what became the Annenberg Beach House in the 2000s. The fact that it once belonged to 1920s movie star Marion Davies was irrelevant at that time. But I think we can all agree that we're glad we saved them. We're all glad that the pier and the beach house are here today because they're unique, differentiating attractions that make Santa Monica a unique, differentiated place. Same opportunity as sitting here with the Civic Auditorium for you. Don't fall prey to making this one more generic real estate transaction. Thank you.
Thank you. Shalay Murashemi.
Good evening, Shalay Murashemi. 25 years resident of Santa Monica, and 13 years co-chair of Civic Center Task Force, with, co-chair with Anne Bowman. I already sent my letter and talked about the issues that, how we can bring back Civic Auditorium, but I just want to say that Civic Center is a symbolic part of our city. And a little bit of history about this, how Civic Auditorium started back again to the public, that like, two, three years ago, me and Anne, we were thinking about, let's do something about Civic Center and make it revive again, and looking at auditorium, something that we, it should have been again back to life. And with that in mind, we went to a lot of valued people, including council members. We went to Lana, at the time was council member, Ms. Mayor Negrete, and council member Jesse and Jesse Zwik, and Caroline Torosis, and also Mayor, at the time, Gilim Davis. And we asked them the advice how we can start looking at auditorium. And Gilim, at the end of the conversation we had with Terry, he said, we are under budget, and all we can do is, if you can find philanthropists. And as soon as you find that, I promise that we can put this on agenda. And it was interesting, in one week, we find Lori Navshon, that she said, I have a group RPG, and let's do it. And we went back to Gilim, and I said, Gilim, just happened. We find through the community everywhere we serve.
Thank you. Marianne LaGuardia.
Hi, my name is Marianne LaGuardia. There are a few of you who may or may not know me. Rather than bore you with a list of my credentials, I'm coming here tonight just as someone who feels thoroughly fortunate to have lived in Santa Monica for the last 40 years, and even more fortunate that one of my children and my grandchildren are living here. And I hope I live long enough to watch them grow up. And Jerry, Jesse, I apologize for being over 50. I'm 81, and I hope I got a few more good years in me. So let me just talk as someone who lives here. You guys have this wonderful opportunity to do something spectacular for the community. You serve, you are serving the past by paying homage to its history with respect to the auditorium. You are serving the future because I believe it will contribute not only to the cultural life and reputation of the city, but to the much-needed financial life of the city, both in terms of tourism, business, and happy people who want to spend more time here. And you will serve the present, and to use a little bit of street language in this, any degree of benefit you would get from doing something else with that auditorium will pale by comparison to the degree of pissed-offedness you will have generated in the community. You're here, you're together. Please use that energy to make this deal go forward. I ask you to adopt the mindset when you go into negotiations, let's see how we can make this deal work, instead of let's pick nits. Because you know you have a blue-chip organization that wants it, or wants to keep going with the plan. And you know you have your supporters, the people who elected you, who want it. So it's a win-win. Don't screw it up. Run with it. Bye.
Thank you. Pissed-offedness, I like that, that's a new one.
It's a step down from.
And our final speaker is Zoe Montaner.
I want to ask before I start, do we pulled out item 4F and 4G? And what about 4C?
Well, 5F, 5F staff pulled out.
Okay, but 4C is still?
Yeah.
Is still, and I am speaking in, about, so 4F was taken out?
5F was taken out.
So 4F and 4G is still?
Mm-hmm.
Perfect. So I'm going to, I have four more minutes, because I spoke two, and I'm going to speak about three items. 4C, 4F, and 4G.
Yeah, consent is one item.
Oh, okay. So, okay, so let's, let's, then two minutes. Thank you so much, council members. It's a good meeting today. The day of my birthday, Santa Monica Daily Press published in its first page, "As Possibly Criminal Landlord Double Housing Prices, Officials Warn of Legal Repercussions." This is our district attorney. Words, not mine, I'm just bringing them to you because I don't want Sean Besser to sue me for libel or slander, because I referenced those words on the criminality of certain landlords in.
Which item are you talking on?
Um, item, you're talking about crime in 4C, Authorization to Accept the 2024 Justice Assistant Grant for Implementation of JAG Project on Impact Crime and Keep Neighborhood Safe.
It's just adding money to the contract, but just, we just want to stick to the.
I understand, but you know, criminality is criminality, and safe neighborhoods are safe neighborhoods. I mean, I have a roommate, someone who moved to my apartment.
We're going off, sorry. We're trying to keep public comment on anything general at the beginning and just.
But this is about safety, no? It is about safety. I'm keeping it about safety. I'm keeping it about safety if you let me finish and make a point.
This item is just about awarding money to a contract. I just want to be clear. I know that the word, the verbiage is talking about safety, I don't want to waste too much time going back and forth, but if you're speaking to item 4C about whether or not we should authorize funds, that's what you'd be talking about?
I will be, yes, I want to talk about authorizing those funds and how those funds will be used.
Well, however used is already decided.
Oh.
So we're just voting tonight to accept more funding for this program, that's all it is.
Okay. So let's move then to item 4F, Introduction of the First Reading of an Ordinance Amending Municipal Code Section Concerning Limitations of Campaign Contributions. I heard Councilmember Hall explaining the reasoning for this at the Noma meeting, and I was confused because back in 2014, I brought the premiere of the movie documentary, Pay to Play, Money in Politics and How It Corrupts a City. So increasing the limit doesn't make any sense to me. I hosted a program that is on YouTube about the corrupt influence of money in government. And I think, you know, part of the reason what I've been suffering at the hands of Sean Besser is because he's a contributor, and he has political ties. So this item and this second ordinance brings me real concern about how we handle ethics and ethical government in our city. So please pay attention, because it doesn't make any sense to keep.
Thank you. And that concludes public comment on agendized items.
That is correct. We'll now move on to item 4, the Consent Calendar. All comment, I'm sorry, all items will be considered and approved in one motion unless removed by a council member for discussion. In accordance with Charter, Section 615, the adoption of all ordinances and resolutions shall be by reading of title only unless a council member present dissent. No public discussion is permitted on ordinances for second reading and adoption. Anne, I have a request from Councilmembers Enid Skye to pull item 4F, and a request from Councilmember Hall to pull item 4G.
Councilmembers Enid Skye.
Mayor, I actually don't want to pull 4G, I just want to register a no vote.
Okay.
Is that done 24 hours in advance?
Yeah.
Okay. Was, we, I did not, did we get a notification of that?
No, I did.
Okay, we've been asked to receive notifications if items have been pulled, just for the future.
Well, they did for me, for agenda mention, but.
I would just say, I mean, I had asked that, that we all received that, and that's why we want them to be pulled in advance, so we can prepare. Thanks.
Okay, item 4G is just, Councilmember Hall would like to be registered as a no vote. And then, Councilmembers Enid Skye, would you like to speak on item 4?
Do we want to vote on the rest of the?
Yes. Can I get a motion to move the rest of the items?
So moved.
Okay, I guess. Councilmembers Enid Skye, I moved, second by Councilmember Snell, we're registering a no vote on item 4G for Councilmember Hall.
Councilmembers Enid Skye?
Yes.
Councilmember Snell?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Torosis?
Yes.
Councilmember Raskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall, with the exception of 4G?
Yes.
Councilmembers Wick?
Yes.
And Mayor Negrete?
Yes.
So item 4F?
So.
I'm sorry, let me read it to the record, please.
Oh, yes.
Introduction and First Reading of an Ordinance Amending Municipal Code Section 11.04.050 Concerning Limitations on Campaign Contributions.
Okay, so, thank you. I, when I was reading this, I, sorry, I emailed that I wanted to pull it, I think, on Friday. So I know that we have the placeholder language in the ordinance that's proposed here as $1,500, but I wanted to be able to have a discussion amongst the council if we should raise it to a lower amount than that, and if we wanted to explore a voluntary expenditure cap, subject to which you would be able to use, a candidate would be able to utilize the higher campaign contribution threshold, and if they did not agree to a voluntary expenditure. and if they did not agree to a voluntary expenditure cap, to keep it at a lower amount. So I just felt like...
Can I just, for clarification in terms I can understand, do you mean that somebody would say, "I don't need to receive 1,500, so I'm just going to voluntarily say, I only need to accept 500 per candidate"? Is that...
Uh, no, so if, so for example, I see, so Beverly Hills in the staff report is noted as having a voluntary expenditure cap of $100,000. If a candidate were to accept that voluntary cap of $100,000, then they would be able to accept campaign contributions of up to $500. If they do not accept that voluntary expenditure cap, then they would only be able to accept contributions up to $125. And as I think we've had the discussions before, $410 per contribution, while it seems like a lot, is really not that much within the context of how unfortunately expensive campaigns are to run. And as, you know, as I think we've seen, not everybody has the funds to be able to self-fund their campaigns. So accepting a higher contribution amount would allow more folks to run for office, I believe. So I wanted to see if the council would be amenable to raising the limit to 1,200 with the CPI adjustment every two years and instituting a voluntary spending cap of $100,000 with that limit. And for folks who did not want to agree to the voluntary, a voluntary spending cap of $100,000, to keep it at 410 with the CPI adjustment every two years. If that makes sense.
I don't see anyone in the queue. I personally agree with that. I understand both sides of the, sides of it in terms of trying to raise enough money and not having, you know, it's a small amount to be able to raise enough funds to do the marketing that's necessary. However, I do feel that depending on who you are and who you surround yourself with, it might be harder for you to access those funds. This sounds like a creative, alternative way to at least put the cap on the total dollars amount, dollar amount raised, so that someone's not, you know, you're not competing with folks in the $200,000 range. I don't see anyone in the queue. Are you trying to, oh, Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, for some reason we can't pick the queue.
Do I need to press something? Discussion mode?
Yeah.
Okay, there we go. Try it now. No? Who do you mic off? I don't know. This is what it was before, but...
That should be it.
That's what it was before, and now it is. Okay. Councilmember Hall?
I was there.
I see you in here. Oh, am I...
Don't try it.
There we go. Test, test. There we go. First, thank you, City Attorney, for doing the work to do the environmental scan. It's very clear that we are on the very low end of what campaigns can raise. So I thought, I think that's really important to highlight for the public. I would say I'm against a voluntary expenditure cap, and my reason for that is the whole intent behind this motion from the start was to put candidates on an even playing field with independent expenditures. And per the Supreme Court ruling in Citizens United, independent expenditures are not capped in any way. And so for candidates to be able to control messaging and control their own campaigns and be, and for candidates who might not come from a political background where they can get the support of some of these independent expenditures that are so important as it currently stands in our local politics and in politics in general in this country, I think that can put candidates on an uneven playing field. So I would not be favorable to an independent or to a voluntary expenditure cap in that manner. When we wrote the motion, I think we did anchor high on our number of 1,500, so I'm willing to bring that down to be more in line with, you know, sister cities of West Hollywood or Culver City, which will be increasing this year, I believe. City Attorney, do you know, are these the 2026 election cycle numbers or are these the 2024?
These are current as of right now.
Current as of right now, okay. So I'd be amenable to bringing that down, but I'm not in favor of a voluntary expenditure cap.
Councilmember Raskin?
I agree with Councilmember Hall. I think that the benefit of what we're trying to achieve here is that it does place us on equal footing with, or would place candidates on equal footing with IEs. But I, and forgive me if I missed this, but what would the benefit be that you would get if you stuck to that cap in this specific case?
If you stuck to the cap, you would be able to accept the higher, the higher amount of campaign contributions. And if you did not agree to the cap, you would be limited to the current amount, current cap.
I, yeah, I, okay. I'll have to think about that.
Councilmember Protem Terosis?
Yeah, so I think everyone knows this, but independent expenditure committees outspent candidates 2-1 in our last election here in Santa Monica. Again, I don't want to repeat what Councilmember Hall said. I know I voted no for this originally because I don't support increasing the expenditure, excuse me, the campaign contributions because I feel like it looks self-serving for someone who plans to run for reelection. But I definitely don't support a cap. If the Supreme Court has said that this is political, donations are political speech, and we artificially put a chilling effect on that by putting a cap on ourselves, it hamstrings our ability to compete with these independent expenditure committees who spent over $800,000 in our last election. So I am concerned with that, no matter what the amount is that the campaign contribution level is set at. Thanks.
I just wanted to comment on that and just say that, I can't quote exactly, but I use in PACs, the average donation is over like 10,000, up to 100,000 per individual or company. So the issue I'm having is the irony behind it because PACs and IEs, although you may have to be in a political realm to understand who these PACs and IEs are, I think we're talking about police unions and fire unions who maybe spent the most. Most people know who those are if they're going into an election. The other groups in the city that tend to put together the PACs, they may not be aware of those, but the reality is when you're going for individual campaign dollars, I think what I'm hearing is, or how I feel is that in order for you to be getting $1,500 per person, what kind of circle of people do you have to know? You have to know people who have deep pockets and can give that on an individual basis. And if this is about being inclusive and getting people to be able to have equal footing, that's the irony. And I find the cap kind of evens that out. If you're willing to accept that money, but if it's all about equal footing, then you should be able to say $100,000 is enough to run a campaign. But if you're not willing to accept that, then that means that maybe you have access to those PACs and IEs and those other political groups that might be raising more money for you. So therefore, you have a lower amount but can reach that 100,000 because you've got more access to the community. Those are my thoughts. Councilmembers Zarneskaya?
So I hear and I understand both sides of this, and that was kind of my intent with wanting to go with a voluntary cap. But I'm open to just to raising it, using, to doing option one, to just raise the contribution limit about. But I would not be in favor of raising it all the way to 1,500. I think I would be more comfortable around the 1,200 mark to be more in line with some of our peer cities as laid out in the chart. But I...
Councilmember Raskin?
Yeah, Mayor, I hear you. And I think, you know, as we, as we said when this came up last time, I would much rather see publicly financed elections. And it, I think, bothers all of us that money has corrupted politics in the way that it has. And, you know, it plays out in weird ways, like you're saying, but then also really, really good nonprofit, well, 501(c)(4) is like Planned Parenthood, the Sierra Club and others are also hamstrung by the $410 limit that we have here. I'm just brainstorming out loud here, you know, and obviously we don't have money for this now, but I wonder if at some point we could perhaps create kind of like an inverse system of what Councilmember Zarneskaya is saying, where if maybe 30 days before the election, you haven't reached a certain threshold, then public subsidies can come in and they can help you out by giving you free airtime or some other type of free advertising that isn't available to folks who have reached higher thresholds. Again, I don't think that's economically feasible now, but it's something we might want to brainstorm in the future.
Councilmember Hall?
I'd like to move the staff recommendation with a contribution limit of $1,200.
Second.
Okay. Amended motion by Councilmember Hall, seconded by Zarneskaya.
Councilmembers Zarneskaya?
Yes.
Councilmember Snell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Terosis?
No.
Councilmember Raskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmembers Wick?
Yes.
And Mayor Negrete?
No.
That motion passes 5 to 2. Now move on to the, I'm sorry, closed session. Item 5A, existing litigation, PICO Neighborhood Association versus Maria Loyah, I'm sorry, Anne Maria Loyah versus the city. Item 5B, real estate negotiation for the civic. Item 5C, appointment for consideration for the city manager position. And item 5E, existing litigation, Renee Miller versus the city. And item 5, I'm sorry, I skipped 5D, I'm sorry. Item 5D, conference with, I'm sorry, real estate negotiation regarding the Santa Monica Beach parking lot at 1550 for the LA Olympics 2028 beach volleyball. 5E was existing litigation, Renee Miller versus the city. And 5F was pulled at the request of staff.
City Attorney, when do you honestly think we're going to be back?
I would say 8:45.
8:45. We won't be any earlier. We could be back earlier. No, we can't.
Possible, but I would doubt it.
Okay, so 8:45 is the estimation. All right. We will be back. Thank you.
Okay, it is 9:30 and we are back in session. Thank you for waiting. Do we have anything to report out, City Attorney?
Yes, two matters to report out on. First of all, on the Renee Miller versus City of Santa Monica case listed on the agenda, that was a personal injury case that settled for $250,000. Council approved the settlement at the March 11, 2025 meeting with a vote of 7 to 0. Also, on the civic matter, the council approved execution of the E&amp;A and the vote was 7 to 0 and all of the matters were heard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do any council members have anything to report on? I'm sorry, I'll stick to you, City Mayor.
That's okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam and council members. I'm pleased to report that the Interdepartmental Economic Development Task Force had its first meeting earlier today. The room was filled with much enthusiasm and great ideas and I look forward to continuing to update you as these efforts progress. As you heard in tonight's proclamation, this coming Monday, March 31st, is Trans Day of Visibility. Check out the staff picks book list at the library and find more ways to commemorate the occasion on our blog post at santa monica.gov. And April is Arts Month, which is always a special time in Santa Monica, so head to santa monica.gov/events for details and all the happenings. As Women's History Month comes to a close, I encourage everyone who can to attend the final event, a film screening and panel discussion of Fly Like a Girl at the Maine Library, MLK Auditorium, this Saturday, March 29th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And we've added more videos celebrating the incredible women who work for the city on our YouTube channel, so be sure to check those out. And those are really great. We've got great staff members who've been highlighted. The City of Santa Monica is seeking feedback from older adults, people with disabilities, caregivers and other community members to inform the forthcoming Aging and Disability Action Plan. Please be sure to go online and fill out the survey before April 1st. Next week, Big Blue Bus is hosting public hearings to collect input on proposed fare adjustments. You can read the details of the proposed changes and register for the public hearings at bigbluebus.com/meetings. And finally, a reminder that City Hall will be closed for Cesar Chavez Day on Monday, March 31st. Find closure information at santa monica.gov. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will now ask if any council members have anything to report on travel since our last regular meeting.
Council members, I'm going to ask Gaia.
I attended the Civic Well Conference in Yosemite and had a fabulous time, learned a lot, made some great connections. And I brought stickers for y'all, but I forgot them in a different backpack, so I'll bring them next time.
The muffins were a good replacement, thank you. Council member Haskin?
Yeah, on March 14th, I presented at the UC Davis School of Law's Environment to Law Symposium on Sea Level Rise Mitigation. That's it.
Cool.
Yeah, thank you. Well, the week of March 10th, I was in DC meeting for National Legacies Cities. I met with Senator Padilla Schiff, Congressman Ted Lieu. I went and had meetings at HUD and with our lobbyists, making sure that during the CR that Santa Monica hopefully can maintain its funding from this administration. The meetings that I was in on National Legacies Cities were all focused on things around public safety, funding for our city as we look forward to rebuild post fires, as well as many other things. It was a fruitful trip and I had, I don't know, probably a dozen or 15 meetings and it was very beneficial, so I think that's it. Anybody else have any travel? Nope?
All right, moving on.
Item 6, public input on remaining agenda items only. Public comment is permitted on ordinances for introduction and first reading. No public discussion is permitted on ordinances for second reading and adoption. Public input for 12 items will be heard at the time when the public hearing is called. And we have two speakers for this item.
I see, oh, Teresa Marasco and Karen Melick. Okay, Teresa? And Karen Melick, if you're here, you can just stand up in front, thanks.
And Ms. Marasco, have you signed up three times? Are you speaking on three different items?
Yes, I am. On A, B, and C. 16A, B, and C.
Okay, you may begin. You may begin.
Oh, okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam and City Council members. First, I want to speak on 16A vacancy to the Recreation and Parks Commission. I highly recommend Nikki Coloff for the vacant seat on the Recreation and Parks Commission. Over the last several years, I have engaged with Nikki and followed her community involvement, especially regarding the issues families and their children face within the school district. Nikki is very smart, very knowledgeable about city government activities, and she cares a great deal about this community. Please appoint Nikki Coloff for this position. Next, Agenda Item 16B, Housing Authority Board. I am a current resident advisory board, client advisory board member, and have been actively organizing with other RAB CAB members in the city, holding Zoom meetings, helping to inform Santa Monica Housing Authority program participants about the administrative annual and five-year plans, which contain the laws, regulations and guidelines regarding HUD-funded housing assistance programs. Over the last six years, my fellow RAB CAB members and I have worked to create the client advisory board, to expand the RAB to include all Santa Monica Housing Authority program participants and not just Housing Choice voucher clients. During a Zoom meeting, the RAB CAB voted to elect two members to represent us on the HAB and made the recommendation to City Council. The HAB has never had a consistent RAB representation as required by law. City Council did eventually appoint Hajer Mukhter seed, however, the City of Santa Monica never had a second RAB representative on the HAB as required by law. So this is an important and pivotal appointment and we thank you. Of all the applications, Belinda Phillips stands out to me. She has experience working on a board, is a longtime voucher holder and has expressed her desire to work hard. Whoever is appointed needs to be ready to learn about and work on the discretionary changes to the annual administrative and five-year plans that HUD allows and requires. More importantly, Ms. Phillips expressed her desire to work with and on behalf of other RAB CAB members as one of her main goals. Therefore, I would ask that the City Council please appoint Belinda Phillips to the vacant HAB seat. Agenda Item 16C, Measure GS Resident Oversight Committee. I am here tonight to introduce myself, to express my strong interest in joining the Measure GS Resident Oversight Committee. With a deep passion for community, the creation of affordable housing and helping residents access and maintain stable, clean, safe, affordable housing, and maintain and increase access to excellent public schools for Santa Monica's children. My family and I have been proud members of the Santa Monica community for the last 11 years. We moved from Colorado to California using our Housing Choice voucher. The Housing Choice voucher program has enabled my family to live in decent, clean, safe and affordable housing in cities and neighborhoods of our choice. Thanks to Housing Choice, my children have benefited immensely by having access to excellent schools and have been afforded more incredible opportunities for their future because of the HCV's program is specifically designed to help individuals and families get a leg up by living in high opportunity, low poverty neighborhoods. During the COVID-19 pandemic, my family and I were displaced from our unit due to no fault of our own. My experience being homeless in Santa Monica provided me with lived experience and insight specific to Santa Monica's homeless population. Over the last 11 years, living here in my three years and three months as a housing commissioner, I have learned that Santa Monica has a significant population of low-income tenants who are elderly, disabled or have children. The low-income renters that live here reside in various types of housing such as rent-controlled, 100% affordable, deed-restricted inclusionary units, HUD-funded senior housing and Santa Monica's Housing Authority rental assistance that is federally funded through five different HUD voucher programs. Some portion of the tenants that live in the affordable housing types and or have a housing voucher are paying more than 40% of their income and rent. These residents are the very people Measure GS was created to assist concerning affordable housing, anti-displacement and homelessness. I am a strong believer and advocate of housing being a human right. As we are entering into one of the toughest eras of America's history, especially regarding growing poverty and the lack of affordable housing, Measure GS is going to be Santa Monica's most important resource for the low-income residents. I want to be a part of the Measure GS Oversight Committee because I care deeply about vulnerable residents and ensuring Santa Monica's children continue to have access to excellent schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Melick?
Good evening. My name is Karen Melick and I'm here to ask for your support to fill the open Recreation and Parks Commission position. I've lived in Santa Monica for over 32 years. I was instrumental in the creation of the Santa Monica Aquatics Advisory Committee, which is an advisory group to the Recreation and Parks Commission and was chair of that group for five years. The group was created to improve the communications and cooperations with the various user groups for the swim center and the staff, which were very strained due to the shortage of pool times. We've been successful at improving the relationships and improving the allocation processes. My education background is a BS in Engineering and an MBA, both from UCLA. and baseball and basketball at Samo High. I also played in the Santa Monica Adult Softball League. I would like to be an advocate for the residents of Santa Monica to ensure that parks and recreation are priority for the city and that the city commits the resources for Santa Monica to have facilities equal or above those of comparable cities. Thank you for your time and support.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to Item 7, Study Session for Five-Year Water and Wastewater Rate Study Session.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, and city manager. All right. Thank you. So tonight, we'll be presenting the five-year water and wastewater rate study for consideration input from City Council. I'm Sunny Wang, the Water Utilities Manager for the city. I'm in charge of the Water and Wastewater Utility for the city. We provide both drinking water, wastewater, and recycled water service for our community. These are just some statistics that we provide the community. One of the key things we'll be discussing tonight is our four water storage reservoir that serve several critical functions for the city as part of the rate study. Before we begin, we want to kind of talk about some of the factors that impacted our water wastewater funds, from COVID pandemic impacts on water usage, climate instability from severe droughts moving to wet winters impacting water usage in the city, market volatility, probably one of the most important factors that impacted our funds, from general inflation rates of 4% to 5% for the water industry to about 5% to 16% post-pandemic. That's impacting both our operational costs as well as our capital replacement program costs, as well as decreasing revenues that cover fixed costs for our operations. Just a reminder for our ratepayers, approximately 70% of our operation costs are fixed, so water use, when that goes down, our revenues are impacted. We have trouble covering some of our fixed operation costs, since we only collect about 15% of revenues through fixed charges right now and 85% through volumetric charges. And looking at the performance of our water fund in the past five years, the orange dash line here shows the forecast of revenue, and the blue is the actual, the blue solid lines are actual revenues. For the water fund, we experienced a shortfall of about $27 million over the five-year period. That shortfall is offset through a combination of grants and low interest. Revenue bond, we're able to secure to fund our water self-sufficiency projects, as well as deferring our water main replacement program. Similar on the wastewater side, we experienced a shortfall of about $16 million over the past five years of what was forecasted. Similar to the water fund, those shortfall was made up through grants, low-interest loans from the state. There was that one year, I will note, that we met revenue targets. That's thankfully to our low-interest loan we received from the state that had a $4 million principal forgiveness for that year. However, despite those shortfalls in both of those enterprise funds, we're still able to deliver on what we promised the community in the majority of the water self-sufficiency projects, starting with the award-winning SWIP that was completed in 2022, with then the Arcadia Water Treatment Plant expansion and the Olympic Welfare Reservation that's set to complete this summer. And we recently completed our advanced meter infrastructure project in the city as well. This is a key component to help our ratepayers understand their water usage, how to plan for their bills, better moving forward as they get real-time information on their water usage. So we're still very proud to be able to deliver these key projects despite the financial challenges we faced the past five years. So looking at this five-year rate study, these are our key goals for the rate study for both the water and wastewater enterprise funds. They are two separate funds. We want to invest in our, continue investing in our water wastewater infrastructure to maintain high-quality service. One of the key things we're focusing on is investing in reliability and resiliency, and also to ensure the cost-of-service analysis so that one customer class is not subsidizing a different customer class, that everybody's paying their fair share for water and wastewater services. So we'll start with the easy one, the wastewater enterprise fund. The proposed five-year rate adjustment is 777.66% over the next five years. This is really just to keep pace with inflation that we're experiencing in the water market. Post-COVID, we're seeing inflation rates anywhere from 5% to 16% in the water wastewater market. This will allow us to maintain a modern infrastructure and rehabilitate key infrastructure on the wastewater side. Now focusing on our water fund, this is where a lot of focus, as I mentioned, is on our water reservoirs. Here's just an overview of our water distribution system. The four large reservoirs that we operate total about 40 million gallons, or average about four days' worth of storage, and these are the four blue dots you see on the northeast corner. They're critical for several functions. They're there to make sure we have sufficient supply to feed our entire distribution system from the northeast corner to the southwest, and also the ability to meet max day and peak water demands in the city as well. Most importantly, as highlighted by the recent wildfire emergency in the region, our four water reservoirs also provide over 25 hours of firefighting capability for our city. These reservoirs range anything from 60 to 70-year-olds to over 100 years old. So one of the key focuses rehabilitates our reservoirs. It also aligns with several key safety element goals that was presented to City Council back in January, to maintain a seismically resilient infrastructure, resilient water storage, providing peak-load water supply, and also having emergency water supply available. So our reservoir is critical to meeting these safety element goals. Just to give everyone an idea of the rehabilitation work at these reservoirs, this is pretty consistent across all four reservoirs. We need to bring it up to current seismic codes, upgrade electrical system, make hydraulic water quality improvements, and also enhance security and reliability at these reservoirs. So if you look at the top-right photo, here's just an example of some of the improvements that's being planned and recommended by our engineering consultants. One is to strengthen the walls and the floor by adding additional concrete to replace the wooden roof or the concrete roof, adding additional support to the columns and beams to support the reservoir. Similar to the bottom-left photo as well, that's our Riviera Reservoir, our largest reservoir at 25 million gallons, and also making seismic improvements like the graphic that's shown at the bottom right to have seismic pipes so they could provide movement. It won't break in the event of an earthquake. So the two options we analyze or present in the staff report is really looking at the reservoirs, if we rehabilitate that or not. So the first option is to continue to fund routine operations, have a financing strategy in place to rehabilitate our reservoirs, as well as replace our Water Operations Center and Water Quality Lab. We want to continue to fund our routine CIP projects to maintain a modern infrastructure for the city. The second option, taking some efficiencies by deferring that reservoir, which staff does not recommend. So looking at water rate option one, we have a funding strategy in place to rehabilitate reservoirs for the benefits that I highlighted earlier. The proposed five-year rate increase here is 20, 16, 9, 9, 6%. It is a heavy lift in the first two years. Part of that is to raise enough matching funds within our enterprise fund to go out and get matching funds in terms of loans, as well as grants, to help support the reservoir rehabilitation. So the financing strategy that we have in place to rehabilitate four reservoirs and to replace our Water Operations Center and Water Quality Lab, the total program is about $130 million. We have talked to the U.S. EPA regarding the LFIA loan, which is available to fund about 49% of the program. We have also talked to United States Bureau of Reclamation, as well as state agencies regarding grants. But with that, we, the city, need to come up with about 20%, 25% of matching through local funds, and that's the reason for the higher increases in the first two years. And with this funding strategy, we anticipate to complete the whole program within 10 years. However, there's a lot of uncertainty right now with federal funding, availability, timing. With this strategy, we also, by raising that $33 million local matching fund, if we are not successful in getting outside assistance, we have still raised enough money to rehabilitate at least one reservoir, the first one being the Riviera, that being the largest at 25 million gallons is the most critical. So even without outside assistance, we have enough of capital to rehabilitate one and also raise enough revenue to do one reservoir every five years. So under this scenario, we would complete the total program over 20 years, but we still need to find additional funding to replace our Water Operations Center and Water Quality Lab down the road. The second option, as I mentioned, is not recommended by staff. However, we just want to point out some of the risks with deferring our reservoirs. These are just photos of inside the reservoir where you can see hairline cracks on the walls of our reservoirs already. Remember, these are fairly old. 60 to 71 is actually 101 years old. So the risk of failure during seismic events, and depending on which of the four reservoir fails, we could either lose our entire local water supply or our entire water supply altogether, because all of our water has to go to the reservoirs first before it's distributed to our customers in the city. Just a comparison of commodity prices, even with the proposed rate increase on municipal drinking water, the Tier 1 charge is still less than a penny a gallon, right? Even with the rate increase, we're still less than a penny a gallon, and that water is good for many uses, from drinking, shower, irrigating your lawns, and fire protection, just to name a few. Right? In comparison to other commodity prices for water, this is an example of a water fill station that you see at some supermarkets. You're paying anywhere from $0.40 to $1 a gallon, or bottled water, $1 for a $10 gallon. And a lot of times, those are really just tap water that's repackaged without any additional treatment. You're just paying for the marketing. Just a comparison with the proposed option-one rate increase on the Water Enterprise Fund, this is for a single-family residential. The orange bar are the current rates, and that blue bar shows the proposed rate increase. So you can see that Santa Monica is still within range with our neighbors of Culver City, LADWP, and Beverly Hills. For multifamily, similar, we're in range with Pasadena, Beverly Hills, Culver City, LADWP. But I will point out, we have a much more diverse water supply in comparison to any of these agencies on here. A lot of them don't even have facilities that we have or operate, and the diversity that we have in our water supply, just to make a point on that, during the fires, we actually ramped up our water supply to 110%. We're able to do that because of our sustainable water infrastructure project that we ramped up to 100% to fill water trucks if needed, and that didn't put any strain on our potable water supply for the fire hydrants. We also compared for typical commercial. A typical commercial in our city is a fast-service restaurant or a coffee shop, right? The impact and change to their bill, still within range of our neighbors of Beverly Hills, DWP, and Culver City. The last comparison that I have on here is for a smaller retail store, so these are maybe like your clothing stores, your bookstores, and how that compares. With the proposed rate increase, the first year, Santa Monica is right there with Beverly Hills, Long Beach, and Glendale, still more affordable than passing in Culver City. One thing you do know that LADWP kind of shifted all the way to the left because they're 100% volumetric. So if you're an ultra-low water user, like some of these retail stores, you benefit from that. That's probably the only scenario that we estimated that LADWP is actually on the lower spectrum. The other interesting to point out here with Culver City is that they're served by a private water company, and their rate structure there is 70%, 80% fixed cost. So that's actually a true revenue recovery with 70% of our costs being fixed. So they're paying a lot more fixed upfront charges and less on volumetric because they're a private entity. As I mentioned, one of the main projects completed is our advanced water metering infrastructure. This is a great tool for our customers to be able to budget their water. They're able to see their water usage in real time, every hour, how much water they use, to be able to help them budget their utility bills better. It also is a great tool for leak detection, right? It'll give you a push alert within 24 hours of a leak being detected, so you can start looking for that leak and to fix it right away rather than waiting for your bi-monthly bill to show up to let you know that you have a leak on your property. We also recommend council to maintain the Low Income Assistance Program. Currently, the Low Income Assistance qualifies under SCE or Selcal Gases Program, so they just need to show us proof of that, and they qualify for our Low Income Assistance Program. On the water side, they get $1 off per HCF on the Tier 1 water rates, and same on the wastewater side. And the typical transfer from the general fund to subsidize that is about $114 K or so on the water side, about 40 to 50 K on the wastewater side. This is just schedule of where, tonight, we're here for the council study session on March 25th. We intend to issue the Prop 218 notice on April 11th, and then to come back to hold a public hearing on June 10th. Once adopted, the new rates will be in effect July 1st. We also have the bar at the bottom that we intend to go to all the neighborhood groups holding general public meetings in May to meet with downtown Santa Monica, Chamber of Commerce as well, to present the rate adjustment to them as well. So we actually have our first neighborhood group meeting next Tuesday. So let's just close out with the key inputs we're seeking from council for the water rate options, whether to go with water rate option one, to have our fully-funded program to rehabilitate reservoirs, to maintain the Low Income Assistance Program, as well as to maintain the policy of our drought rate structure that was adopted in the previous rate study. Essentially, that's when there's a statewide mandate to conserve water, say, reduced by 10%. We would adjust the volumetric rate up by 10% to cover for that loss in revenue. So we would also recommend to maintain that same structure as adopted previously. Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff? Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Wang. Great presentation, and thank you for all the previews you did with all of us. I know it took a lot of time. Have we, have we projected in our budget projections the continuance of our Low Income Assistance Program and some of the other kind of ancillary programs that you discussed?
Yeah, so the low-income subsidy from the general fund, that's been budgeted and communicated with the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Zornitz Gaya?
Thank you as well for the excellent presentation and all of the work that went into it. I just wanted to get some clarification about what are the risks if we were to continue to defer maintenance? I understand that there's tariffs that might impact some of the material costs there, so I just wanted to get some clarity on that.
Well, I'll start answering the first part of the question. I think the risk of deferring. I know I kind of went through it pretty quick. There's a lot of different risks, right? The risk of failure in a seismic event, or just due to the age of the reservoirs itself, right? Anywhere, as I mentioned, they're anywhere from 60 to 70-year-olds to 100-year-old. Inability to provide water during emergencies, like the wildfire event. We don't want our reservoirs to be empty or offline. And depending on which of the four reservoir fails, we could lose our entire water supply. So the risk to the city at that point is we would have to provide bottled water to all of our customers, which is a considerable cost. There's also potential noncompliance with regulatory requirements that could result in fines, even potentially losing our water system to stay controlled. And your second question was on tariffs.
Well, yeah, tariffs, and just if we were to defer maintenance, how much more could it possibly cost in the future? I don't know if that's an unknown kind of thing.
I think what we do know is costs always go up by deferring capital costs and replacement. It never comes down. Just an example, our Sustainable Water Infrastructure Project, it was a $96 million project. If you were to build that today, it's probably easily $250, right? Because LA actually built a similar-sized project and completed it a year after us. Their project was $150 million, right? And everything was above ground. We actually put everything below ground as well. So costs only would go up.
Thank you for the clarification. Councilmember Swick?
Hi there. Thank you. I don't have too many questions, in part because we were so well-briefed on this, and I feel good about it, that what we need to do. I was curious, is that, were you saying that there's an app that residents can use when it comes to monitoring their water?
Yeah, so on the Smart Water Meter, so if you're the account owner, you could actually sign up for Eye on Water, which is associated with advanced water metering, and that's the three black images are screenshots from the phone app that you could download on your phone and sign up and track your daily, monthly water usage. That third screen on the right, you see where a circle leak detected. It'll estimate your baseline use, and when it's out of ordinary, it'll kind of give you an alert that there's a leak, as well as send you a push alert.
What's that called?
The app itself is called Eye on Water. We're going to be doing a public outreach campaign now. We just finished a project last month, so we haven't gone to the outreach of getting customers to sign up. All the customers did receive a door hang tag once their meter was replaced, just how to sign up. But we're going to be doing a bigger push on public outreach and education on how to sign up and the benefits of the app, so that will be coming shortly for our customers.
Great, thanks.
Welcome.
Councilmembers now?
Thank you for the project, I mean, for the talk. So obviously, the 10-year estimate for the fixed asset necessary work that needs to be done, and we're saying that the cost would be somewhere in the neighborhood of about $80 million, and that's in real time now. If that cost increases in any way, what's the process of coming back to us? How do we know that the rate percentages that we're increasing now are those that are going to be beneficial for us to make that 10-year project? Because if I understand correctly, part of the reason for the 10 years, I mean, each of them have to go down separately.
That's correct. Yeah, the 10-year program, because we have four, they take anywhere from one and a half to two years for each reservoir, until we have one offline at a time. And yes, price does go up. We sort of touched upon that, go up every year, but when we bid out the project, they'll come back for council action, so you would know the true cost. The cost right now does have contingencies and escalation factors built into it to try to predict as much as we can of what we know now. But even with the four Um, but even with the funding agencies, for example, the US EPA Whiffle Loan, they understand that you could go back and adjust loan amounts based on actual pricing when you bid that out. So you'll have certainty then when you bid it out and that does come back from council action item. It isn't that we say it's a hundred and thirty million dollars, we just go run and do this work without coming back. All of that still has to come to, come back to council for um approval.
I have a question. I just, this is sort of, this may or may not relate to this water rate increase. But I just noticed today I was going for a jog in my neighborhood and I saw the guys working on a um water meter had gotten blown. I think it was in part due to a ficus tree root. So the city took on um the cost of replacing as opposed to the, you know, person having to call a plumber. Are those things reflected in these type, like if there's more of those? I hear a lot of issues around the streets that have these ficus trees and these roots. Like, is that something that's built into this water rate increase or no?
It is, yeah. It's part of our service. Well, if there's a water that gets in our water lines, sewer lines, we come out and clear those, uh, replace the meter. Uh, we actually did one probably a couple of weeks ago, I was there as well. Yeah, that's all included in the budget.
Because I, am I crazy to think that this is sort of becoming more of an issue in the last few years with those roots?
It's been an ongoing issue because roots look for water.
Yeah.
So that's where they're going to gravitate towards, whether it's wastewater or water, it doesn't though difference, but roots will go towards them. It is a problem that we see common, I wouldn't say just the last few years.
Okay, all right, that was it. Councilmembers now.
I'd like to make a motion to move with option one. And give staff direction.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Snell, seconded by Councilmember Zanizkaya.
Can I just?
Comment by Mayor Proton.
Is that okay? Um, Mr. Wang, Mr. Valte, thank you so much. Thanks for the thorough briefing that we got before today. Thank you for being here. I just think for the public to know, you know, our water system was not affected during the fires because we have an excellent system and we have excellent people running it and we are making sure that it's future-proof. And the only option that I see here being viable is option one, um, because it would rehabilitate all four of our portable water storage reservoirs like in it, on an eight to ten year period. Because only one reservoir, as I understand, be taken offline like once at a time for rehabilitation repairs. We, I, as I understand it, you would rehabilitate all four within the next twenty years under like the different five-year rate cycles. And I think as these, as the climate crisis intensifies and as we know how important it is to have safe, clean potable water, we have to invest in making sure that we have a system that has all the capital improvement projects funded, all the reservoirs rehabilitated. Um, and I think we're the gold standard. I just really, really appreciate you. I hope the public understands, even though this is like very granular, the how important this is and why we're excellent. And I think we're excellent because we have to choose option one tonight. So I'm prepared to move forward.
Agreed.
I think uh we had our handful of customers that are on LADWP during the fires asked to switch over to Santa Monica water system. And um, thank you for your work and we're proud to have the outstanding water department that we have and the SWIP program. So let's call, we'll call vote.
I think we can just by voice vote, there's no.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are back on time. Look at that, we made it back.
Item twelve A, introduction and first reading of an interim zoning ordinance, amending downtown interim zoning ordinance and introduction and adoption of an emergency ordinance, amending Santa Monica municipal code, chapter nine point six one, signed to promote economic recovery by increasing land use flexibility in the city's downtown and by making minor changes to signage in the Bayside Conservation District and the Third Street Promenade area. And just a reminder, this is a public hearing.
Do we hear the public comment that is on here first?
Staff report first.
Oh, sorry, staff report first.
Good evening, uh, council, Steve Muzakami from City Planning. Uh, so the following amendments are part of the city's ongoing evaluation of the Economic Recovery IZO, uh, which include minor changes to land uses as well as signage within the downtown promenade area. Uh, the city council continues to provide support to the business community that has been critical for economic recovery, allowing for greater flexibility in land use and also the review procedures that we have for new businesses. Uh, most recently, the council adopted zoning and signing amendments, signage amendments, uh, and that was back in October of twenty twenty-four, uh, removing discretionary review permits, uh, including CUPs, conditional use permits, minor use permits for uh land uses uh within the promenade area. And uh, that also relaxed um sign code requirements in efforts to support businesses, including uh new allowance for digital signage. Uh, so this first amendment is to uh further support uh community assembly type uses along Second, Third and Fourth Street in the downtown uh by removing supplemental requirements uh associated with such uses. Um, examples of uh community assembly uses include our meeting halls, um, our religious facilities and banquet centers. Uh, currently, the use is permitted by right within the subject area. However, this proposed change would further eliminate certain site qualifiers, including minimum parcel size and operational requirements, including uh allowable uh operating hours. Uh, moving on to the second amendment, uh, which is related to simplifying the allowable sign area for digital signs for both one and two-story buildings facing the promenade. Uh, currently, uh, each has separate uh standards, which are broadly established depending on the facade, uh facade design of the building. Uh, this would uh change, uh, this change would result in having a single standard, uh, which is, would be five feet in height uh by the width of the tenant space to first determine the allowable sign area for a building. And then once we figure that out, um, then it can really be placed anywhere in any shape and form uh along the facade. As such, uh, however, it just wouldn't be able to cover any windows or project above the roof line. Uh, so for the community assemblies, uh, this change uh provides greater opportunities for organizations to find permanent uh meeting space within the centralized area of the downtown. And uh, the sign change would provide uh greater consistency and also standardizes the sign area calculation for our buildings. Uh, and this will help to also better equalize the amount of allowable sign, digital sign for each property. Uh, as provided in your staff report, staff recommends the council approve the proposed amendments and uh staff is available for any questions.
We have, we have a public comment first before we. Oh, questions first, okay. Um, I don't see anyone in the queue who have a question. Oh, Councilmember Snell.
Yes, um, thank you. My my first question has to deal with, uh, can you bring back the uh, the slide that chose the uh, the signage, no, the yellow one? So the width is five feet, but, I mean, the the height is five feet, but the width is a hundred percent. So technically, we could have signage around the entire, all the buildings connected. Like, I guess what I'm asking is with, with the um length, why don't we make it nine, ninety percent versus a hundred percent?
Well, I think so this, um, the calculation for the five feet in height and then kind of basing it on the tenant space. Um, I think not every tenant space is going to be the entire building width. So you might have multiple tenant spaces within that area. So it's, it's, it's almost, uh, if you have a tenant that is doing digital signage, but perhaps maybe there's two tenants within a building frontage, um, not, you know, you're not going to get ninety percent of the entire building width. Um, so it kind of just allows each tenant to kind of right-size based on their width of the portion of their.
I don't, I don't know if I understand that correctly. So I guess what I'm saying is if, if it was a hundred percent of the width, then we could actually have signage that could go right around the promenade or straight on down on all the buildings if every tenant wanted a hundred percent of the width. I have some, I have some concerns about that. That's, I mean.
Your point is that if everybody had that, then everyone could have digital computing signage.
Right, right. And so I was just wondering why it's not maybe shortened to ninety percent versus a hundred percent of the width?
So I think, you know, this is, um, as council knows, this is a new program that we're implementing, um, that was implemented back in October. So, um, I think this is part kind of like of our evolving process of how we see digital signs. We haven't really had any applications quite yet to kind of see how this is going to roll out. But in terms of, uh, you know, whether or not we need to do ninety percent or a hundred percent, I think that will be a little bit of our learning curve. But this is kind of uh the start of just at least saying, you know, each tenant space can, let's just measure the width of your tenant space. So it's a little bit clearer in terms of that versus the percentages. But uh, you know, maybe that is something that we can look at.
Okay.
Can I just, I was just curious what you're saying, because like, I hear what you're saying, except for that, I don't know that everybody would want digital signage. But also like, but even if it was ninety percent, everybody could essentially have ninety percent.
Yeah, they could, but I, I mean, but I'm concerned about the hundred percent width, but I understand what you're saying. And then my, my next question is with, with the brightness. The ordinance says uh five thousand, I guess max is the uh candle sight, um, brightness?
Uh, yeah, so that's uh, that's part of the current existing code uh in terms of the brightness. Uh, part of this program is also, um, we're also going to be developing the kind of administrative guidelines that are also going to test the brightness out here. So we do have it in code in terms of what the asset, the criteria is. And then at that point, then we have further mechanisms that we'll be able to test, um, just to make sure that it's all compliant with that.
It just seems like that's incredibly bright. I mean, um, I guess my understanding is, is that illumination between a thousand to two thousand light would be sufficient enough. I just don't understand why five thousand, is there any reason for that?
Well, I think that's kind of the starting point, just in terms of um, kind of, in terms of like, think what we've studied from SEQA, from SEQA standpoint. Also part, also part of that, it does allow for, or we do require that these signs be dimmable. So as it starts to take shape on the building facades, if things are starting to get a little bit too bright, we always have the ability to go out there and work with the property owners uh in terms of finding the appropriate dimness.
I I think just to also give some, um, th- this is already in the sign code because council had approved it previously. But um, this was based on best practices as we were looking at other cities and digital signage. Um, and obviously from a SEQA perspective, I think what's important to note is that there is a limitation of like zero point three foot candles, which is not a whole lot um above ambient at the property line. You know, so it was very mindful about, about not drastically changing, you know, the lighting situation um on the promenade. So in order to do this, you need to have spent like a lighting study to sort of show, you know, your compliance with that. You know, so this was done quite, quite carefully in a measured way because obviously there's no digital signage on the promenade yet. But it's also in the spirit of kind of creativity, innovation, experimentation for the promenade, you know, just sort of to give businesses, you know, every opportunity, um, you know, to be able to attract um and retain businesses to the promenade.
Okay, and then my last question is with the ordinance. The ordinance is from six AM to two AM in the morning, if I understand it correctly. We do have residents that sit on the promenade, that live on the promenade. Uh, have we thought about maybe from ten to ten? As a, as a time period, I mean, two AM in the morning, you know, some bright lights hit my bedroom.
Sure.
Might be, be a little bit too much?
Well, I think the, so the two AM is, is a consistent kind of closing hour for a lot of um our, for example, our alcohol establishments in the downtown. So um, we feel like with uh kind of connecting that with the um, the idea that there's still going to be patrons that are coming out at closing hour two, um, that's where it just felt like that was a reasonable time to kind of sync it up to the activity that's still going to be out there.
I understand that, but I just think that, I mean, that is a long period of time. I mean, that it'll be dark from two AM in the morning to six AM in the morning. And I just think that we might want to think about the residents there and a ten to ten number just seems more reasonable from my standpoint. But that's just my comments.
Councilmember Zanizkaya.
Thank you for the report and coming back with this proposal. I just had a few clarifying questions and then something that hasn't been touched on before. So on the width of the animated digital signs, uh, since it's up to the width of the tenant space and you had mentioned that there might be multi-tenant commercial buildings, um, are there many where there's multiple tenants? So maybe it could be multiple signs or is that just something we don't know at this point?
Yeah, so let's say, for example, if you have two, two tenant spaces within kind of the building. So since it's five feet, you would take it above the storefront and you go five feet in height for the width. And for that business, that is kind of your square footage now. You can then take that in any shape and form, you can kind of average it out and however you like to do that. Doesn't necessarily have to stand in the sign band, this is really just establishing that criteria. So you, that example, you can have two businesses that are kind of doing, uh, that could be doing something different. Maybe somebody has a sign band that's very um rectangular like this. And maybe the next one is going a little bit above and beyond to kind of create a little bit more creativity with like, uh, you know, vertical, having lights going vertical and whatnot. So uh, there is kind of that flexibility for that, but that's how that would work, those two tenants in there.
Thank you. Um, and to go back to the lighting, uh, if that impacts on local residents and uh, one of my concerns would be potential light pollution. So is there any, um, is there any recommendation or are there best practices to have these types of signs kind of angled down to limit light pollution and to limit the impact on anybody who might be above them?
Um, I don't know about like the angular part of it, but I think in terms, terms of like uh the intensity of it. So if we are starting to get complaints, we can definitely build in um some monitoring after it kind of gets its initial approval. And again, this is kind of, as we start to roll out, we're going to learn a lot of things um based on once we get some examples up there.
Okay, thank you. And are, um, would these signs be permitted to have sound?
No, yeah.
Okay, perfect, thank you. That's my questions.
Could you imagine? Councilmember Swick.
Thank you for this um presentation. If I'm remembering correctly, the proposal for the size is actually a scaled down version than what's currently, was currently contemplated and authorized? It could have that effect based on, depending on the building facade. Right, so the proposal in front of us is actually smaller than we previously were allowing? I think this attempts to just get a little bit more consistency through just more standardizing the calculation. But uh, depending on, yeah, if you had a one-story building, but it was a two-volume size, um, that, that this would result in. Got it. And when it comes to the, the, the signs, are these all, um, is this proposed only for signs that are sort of facing the promenade? Or are they also facing the way? These are strictly for the digital signs and in the current zoning ordinance, those are only permitted to be facing the promenade, directly facing the promenade. So in that sense, there's minimal residents that would be directly in line if, if you're talking, you're not talking about like ones that would project out in other directions in that way? That's right, everything would be facing internal to the promenade, nothing would be allowed on the side streets, for example. Okay, thank you.
All right, I just have one question. I think we're moving in the right direction. My only question is what's the advantage of having this continue to be temporary, not permanent?
Well, the um, yeah, the signage is permanent, so that will take an effect immediately. The land use portion, it's always kind of been a part of our economic IZOs. Those, even though they are temporary, they're all the way through uh two thousand twenty-eight at the moment. Um, council can definitely come back at any time to make those permanent. Uh, there is some value to be able to quickly adjust and add things as we are tonight, uh, amending IZOs versus something that's more permanent. It's just in terms of processing, but um, there isn't any uh harm for it to be in its temporary IZO state versus permanent unless the council makes changes before that. But um, so those are kind of just, the advantages are, uh, we can quickly kind of add and amend things um if it's in an interim state.
I would just say as we move forward to look at different uses and attract people here, that being able to plan for these types of events means, you know, some certainty in knowing that these are our policies and ordinances. And then my other question is just as we try to have more activations, a lot of the issues come up around the fire marshal, the expense of it, the changing thought process between our last chief, I don't know where our current chief sits on it yet. But you know, before we were allowed to have things where it took up one side of the promenade, then there was a thought process that we needed to have two lanes. I'm just wondering if we're looking into that as we go into activating and making it more um user-friendly to have, you know, outdoor events consistently? Because we had outdoor dining, for example, I know it was during the pandemic where, you know, twelve twelve had its, that whole section. And then it was taken back and then we kind of have a difference of opinions every time I. And then it was taken back and then we kind of have a difference of opinions every time I hear about an event. And like, there's one that's, that I'm helping some folks put together in the promenade. And it's, again, we're back to this whole thing around whether or not you can have movable chairs and tables.
Yeah, yeah. So we, we, we worked quite extensively with the businesses, the fire department, you know, for, there, there's kind of like an approved layout site plan for basically the entire promenade. I will say coming forward, April twenty-second, we bring to, um, council the promenade entertainment zones, the ordinance, the framework for implementation. We've been working across all departments, um, to basically use the entertainment zones as like this pilot. You know, how can we make the event process much more streamlined, better, easier, more accessible?
More affordable.
Yeah, ex- exactly, all that stuff. Um, and fire is part of those discussions. So, um, we'll be back, you know, to you sort of, to report on, you know, ways that we're making that process.
So you guys are aware of that and you're bringing it back? All right, perfect. Mayor Protam Terosis.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions and I'm ready to move the item. So I understand that, um, the, the maximum brightness, the, um, ambient light, the dimmable requirements, et cetera, um, are pretty standard. And is it true that they're in line with other shopping districts throughout the region? Like Century City, West Hollywood, downtown LA, et cetera?
Yeah, I think we use those as comparables.
And we do want to be a destination and a shopping district for people to come to for economic recovery. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Great. Um, and I understand as well that the above, that, that the standards that we have put in place for this are, were actually done in an effort to maintain our dark skies and ensure that we've reduced the amount of backlight, uplight and glare that would adversely affect the residential area. Is that correct?
That's right.
Great. So, um, I think we have to balance, you know, multiple competing interests, interests here. Um, I also see that staff has said that there's, uh, no Sequoia concerns as it, as the project would not damage scenic resources, et cetera. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Great. So, um, you know, I understand this is different than what we've tried, but I'm, I'm, um, you know, one of the people that supported this previously and I'm prepared to support this tonight. So I would just move that. We can't? Oh, we have to hear public comment. Great. Well, once we do, I'm ready for a motion.
Okay. Councilmember Hall.
Just questions now, discussion after public comment?
I think we're moved on to discussion and you can ask your question and your discussion. It's, oh, the discussion happens after public comment. You're right.
Okay, got it.
No, no questions. Okay. We're ready for public comment and it looks like we have one speaker.
That's correct.
Denise Barton.
Good evening. On item twelve A, to get an economic recovery, you need to hire more police to make the city safe. Then businesses will want to open up in the city, resulting in people coming to patronize them, equally more tax revenue for the city. Not some digital sign that will only cause problems. For example, have you thought about the intrusion of light or reflection off the glass into establishments, both commercial and residential? Or is Lane Polachek's, or is Lane Polachek, is Orange Barrel Media still one of your clients in your consulting lobbying side gig? Let's look at the addresses you're proposing. Three oh one Arizona, which is on the other side of Victoria's Secret and twelve oh two Third Street Promenade. Isn't it a hotel plan for that location? And aren't there residential units above Victoria's Secret? And isn't this rule, if it's good for one, then it's good for all? So just think about what John Ali would put up. But it will be, but it will be turned down at a certain time, you'll say, but that won't happen and won't be enforced. Now let's look at the, look at this another way. In my and other people's mailboxes around the promenade, on Thursday, March twentieth, twenty twenty-five, there was a mailer invited me and other people to an online community meeting for the proposed digital displays at three oh one Arizona and twelve twelve Third Street Promenade, which really makes it look as though the decision has already been made. Due to the item about the digital signs not being until tonight, March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. So again, it would appear that you are making approvals before the item comes before you on the dais. But that would explain there being no discussion before the approval of almost all agendized items the Santa Monica City Council votes on. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now we'll move to discussion. Councilmember Zanizkaya.
I just, uh, wanted to make a quick comment that I really appreciate the elimination of the restrictions as laid out in the staff report to provide for a greater flexibility of uses for community assembly uses. Um, we know that public safety is really important to our community and we also know that when there are more people present, there are more eyes on the street and it makes the space safer. So, um, I see this as a really great step towards not only economic recovery, but also making our downtown community safer. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, three quick comments. One, I do think it is important that we tie the light hours to closing hours. I would hate for people to come to the promenade late at night and think that our businesses are closed, um, by the signs being off. So, uh, while I do appreciate the concerns of, um, maybe the, the handful of residents that live there, I do think that this is our primary commercial district in that, um, it's important that we, um, facilitate economic opportunity and growth in that specific district, uh, while also maintaining, obviously, our brightness standards and ensuring that we're being cognizant of that. I would like to second what Mayor Negrete said about how we are bringing a lot of temporary measures forward. Um, I think it's probably time that we start converting some of these to permanent. We've implemented a lot of IZOs over the past few years and they seem to be working at bringing back businesses to downtown. Um, slow, but we're getting there. Um, so I would definitely like to see a lot of these start coming back. Um, either changes we've previously made that are temporary, uh, or ones moving forward that we're confident in to come as permanent. And then, you know, I, I brought this up with our, uh, economic development director, but I think we should explore potentially a right for the city or for, for DTSM to help coordinate. I guess really it would be for the city. Like, I'm thinking, um, I was at, I was at Disneyland recently and they do this incredible light show of projections on the facades of the buildings. And it makes for a really incredible, like nighttime event experience. And I'm wondering if there is some way that we can reserve the right to do that for city-coordinated events or DTSM-coordinated events as a activation of our promenade. Um, so I don't have any like specific guidance on what I would like to see for that, but maybe something we could explore as we, um, you know, codify this more permanently. Thank you.
Councilmember Askin.
Councilmember Hall, when you said tie this to closing time, I assume you meant two AM, not the closing time of the businesses?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I'm on board with that. Uh, great presentation, Steve, and I'm also ready to move the item. Don't want to steal your thunder, Mayor Protam Terosis.
Yeah, well, thank you. I think we have a motion. I just wanted to add on that as we move to continue to activate, as folks, there are some units above the old, um, Shake Shack. Um, but I think when you move to a downtown area, especially like the promenade, the idea is that it's a downtown area. There's street performers, there's events, um, so light pollution hopefully is the least of anyone's concern, um, living there. And I think the more we can, you know, people have compared, have talked about comparisons to The Grove and West Side Pavilion. And these are the steps we're taking to move in that direction. So I'm excited to see the change in the positive direction. I feel like it's not just something we've come up with out of thin air. It was from listening and responding to, um, our constituents and our businesses and our business community in the downtown Santa Monica Board. So, thank you. And it sounds like Mayor Protam is going to move this item.
Sure. So, uh, I moved that we adopt the, uh, I guess we're not adopt, are we adopting if it's a first reading of an IZO?
We're calling for a motion to adopt the finding of the sequoia.
Yeah, finding of the sequoia, exemption and adoption of the interim zoning ordinance for, um, the signage in the Bayside Conservation District and Third Street Promenade area.
Can I have a second? I'll second.
Do you want to second that?
I'll second it. Motion by Mayor Protam, seconded by myself.
A quick clarifying question. So your, is the motion for the staff recommendation to adopt a, my name categorical exemption for Sequoia and then the introduction for first reading of the IZO, amending, um, uh, you know, promoting economic recovery and allowing more flexibility and the sign, signage one, so it's all three?
I can read it exactly if you'd like. Do you want us to read it exactly or just how it's printed?
Counsel, if I could make a suggestion, just say, I make a motion to adopt staff's recommendation.
There we go. I make a motion to adopt staff's recommendation.
I second that.
Councilmember Swick?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Terosis?
Yes.
Councilmember Snell?
Yes.
Councilmember Zanizkaya?
Yes.
And Mayor Negrete?
Yes.
Item twelve B, introduction and adoption of emergency interim zoning ordinance, extending interim zoning regulations exempting city projects from temporary use permit requirements during a declared local or state emergency.
Uh, good evening, counsel. I don't have a PowerPoint. This is just a very brief presentation. Um, so this, um, extension of the interim zoning ordinance before you is an extension of an IZO that council previously adopted December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. This is an extension of that. Um, at the time, it was adopted in conjunction with actions taken to implement the Samuel Bridge project, uh, which is a diversion program utilizing a no-bearer twenty-four-seven respite hub. Um, this action tonight would simply extend, um, the provisions of that IZO. Um, and it authorizes, uh, temporary uses, um, to be exempt from a TUP, um, on city property or authorized through a city, um, excuse me, funded through, through city funds pursuant to the proclamation of a local emergency. Um, and council in your last meeting, uh, declared, um, extension of proclamation of that homelessness emergency. So this is related, um, to council's, um, action there. So, um, with that, I am available for any questions and so is Jenna Grigsby as well.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Hall?
No questions.
Any discussion, comments?
First public hearing.
Oh, oh, sorry. I keep forgetting we're on a public hearing. Is there any?
There is nobody.
There's no public comment. Okay. I'm like, am I looking at a different list?
Yeah.
So since there's no public comment, we can move into discussion or comments. Councilmember Hall?
I'd like to move the staff recommendation.
Moved by Councilmember Hall, seconded by Mayor Protam Terosis. Can we do a voice?
I think you do, they can do, there's no money involved. Do a voice. Yes.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none. Pass seven zero.
Okay. We'll now move on to the sixteen items. Item sixteen A, appointment to one unscheduled vacancy on the Recreation. I don't know what happened to my thing. And that's okay. I've got copies.
It's here, it's here.
At Recreation and Parks Commission for a term ending June thirty, twenty twenty-eight. So all the council members should have an envelope with QR codes. I ask you to please not scan the QR codes until I advise you to do so.
Can you explain to us quickly, Clark, exactly what's happening?
So we're implementing the ranked choice voting tonight. So, uh, for this item, we have eight applicants. Um, I will bring up the list. Wait, parks and rec, wrecking parks? That's correct. Please don't scan anything yet, though. Okay.
Oh.
So, and I'm sorry, this is kind of small, so you might not be able to see. You don't want to say? I'm sorry, but I do, I do have a list. So there's eight eligible candidates. Um, Larry Ariola, sorry if I pronounced that wrong. Daniel Campbell, Mitch Dorff, Nikki Koloff, Sonam Maker, Karen Melik, Jalav Marashimi, and Julie Stevens. I'll now open the floor for any council members to nominate, um, any of the applicants.
Okay. Are we just doing regular nominations? I'm a little curious about the QR code thing.
So we need the nominations and then once you determine who you're nominating, I will edit the ballot and then I'll tell you when to scan your QR code.
I nominate Karen Melik.
I'd like to nominate Sonam Makar and Daniel Campbell.
You can, yeah, it's better that we have more.
Oh, it's my bad. Okay, then I nominate Karen Melik and Sonam Makar, Makar.
Okay.
I'm sorry, uh, Councilmember Hall, you said Daniel Campbell and who was the other one?
And Sonia. Oh, no, you know.
Sonam Makar.
Okay, so she was nominated twice, I guess.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Okay, so there's three candidates right now.
Right.
Any other nominations?
Sure, how this works, sorry.
You got Karen, there's two positions.
There's one position.
There's one position, okay.
I didn't know we were doing two nominations then. Yeah, okay, my bad.
So just to clarify, Mayor, any council member can nominate as many people as they want and then we will vote of the candidates who are nominated.
Okay, I'm going to add to the mix, Jaleh.
Any other nominations? Okay. Give me a second.
This is fun. Can I get some game show music?
Da da, da da.
What do we do?
Well, she's.
Oh, you will find out.
Think you might have inadvertently taken Dan Campbell off list.
I did. I can, I knew that was going to happen. I can go back and edit it. Just add entry. Oops. Okay. All right. So Maker, Melik, Jalav.
Jaleh, yeah.
Jaleh, sorry. Campbell. Okay, so, okay. Okay, you can now scan your ballots, please.
Sorry, so we do the first one.
The first one, yeah.
Sorry, I'm not slow. I'm not, I mean, I'm not fast.
Okay.
We'll get used to it.
I just put it into my laptop because it says you can also just visit this.
Well, you're on top of it.
Sorry, I read directions too much.
I should have done on my computer, next one.
So now you just put the name in?
You have to put your name in.
So, yeah.
And then rank them.
Just put it in order? Oh. Oh, would you look at that? It's like, um, one of those mentee presentations or whatever.
Wait, hold on, that's a little sensitive.
Oh, you don't have to rank them?
You can remove someone if you don't want to.
Too late, I already did it.
Okay, um, so drag and drop somewhere?
Some technical assistance.
Yeah, well, we're here. Take this drag. What do I do?
So you put it in the order that you wanted in and you have to, so number one should be there.
Instantly, oh, then you have to press vote.
At all, you can delete them with the.
Okay.
I'm going to add someone, but I forgot. It's too late. I didn't say it.
Yeah. We need it to stay like one next to.
I don't have any votes in his.
Oh, I have voted.
I did.
Did you?
Yeah.
Maybe you have to refresh it.
Maybe that's it. Let me see.
I see one, two, three, four.
Oh, there we go. I had to refresh it, sorry. All right, your votes are all in?
I see the results.
Yours not yet.
You'll see mine.
Oh, I can see the results on my phone.
Oh, you can?
Yeah, I see one, two, three, four, five, six. I, I see all seven.
Oh, the winner.
So the winner.
Well, you gotta refresh and then it should show the top one on.
So I think they want to start at the top, Nikki, to show the public how the vote broke down. We should announce this.
Well, if you, okay. So it looks like round one votes. Sonam had three, Karen had two, Jaleh had one, Daniel had one. And then round two, Karen had three, Sonam had three, Campbell, Daniel had one, Jaleh had zero. And then the final is Karen had four, Sonam had three, Jaleh and Daniel had zero, which makes.
So the election is complete and elected candidates are Karen Melik.
Yeah, Karen Melik is the winner. The winner. Calm down.
But they were all excellent and they should stand the cure.
All right, number two. So item sixteen B.
It's growing on me. It might be faster.
It actually is kind of fun.
Oh, let's, okay. Welcome Karen Melik, um, to the Recreation and Parks Commission.
Okay. So the next item is item sixteen B, appointment to one unscheduled vacancy on the Housing Authority Board for a term ending June thirty, twenty twenty-six.
She's, what's her name then?
So.
Oh, don't want to hear it. Sorry, we're talking chitchat. We gotta, we're going on the next one. Do you guys know?
Okay, so we have qualified candidates for this seat and I'll now open the floor for nominations.
I'd like to nominate Yolanda Mickens and Belinda Phillips.
Yolanda Mickens, Belinda Phillips.
Um, sorry, hold on. I wish when you clicked on this, it had all the.
I know, but.
Yeah.
It's not confusing the public. Or any of us.
Oh, here we go. Are you clicking on that?
Sorry, it's a little small. All right, any other nominations? Sorry, it's a little small. All right, any other nominations?
No one else has any other nominations? This is for one seat?
It's for, for one seat, yeah, we can just, just the old-fashioned way, yeah.
If there's only two candidates, we can just go around the dais and say who we want.
Okay.
We don't have to do the electronic ballot.
Do you want to call us one by one, clerk?
Oh, yeah, sure, I can do it that way. All right, Councilmember Zanit Skaya?
Belinda Phillips?
Uh, Councilmember Snell?
Phillips?
Um, Mayor Protemterosis?
Mickens.
Councilmember Raskin?
Uh, Phillips.
Uh, Councilmember Hall?
Mickens.
Councilmember Wick?
Mickens.
And Mayor Negrete?
Mickens.
Great, so Mayor, Yolanda Mickens?
Welcome to the Housing Authority Board, Yolanda Mickens.
And I'd like to change my vote to Mickens.
And I would change mine to Mickens also.
As will I.
So by affirmation. Okay, well now, actually, if you wouldn't mind skipping C at first, because it's a little more complicated, I'd rather do the easier ones first. Okay, so we have three, okay, let me read the item to the record. Item 16D, appointment to one scheduled vacancy on the Human Services Commission for a term ending on June 30, 2025, and there are three candidates.
I nominate Kevin Glover.
Any other nominations?
Do you want to put it up there, or I guess it doesn't?
You don't need to, it's only one.
By acclamation?
Yes.
Aye.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Did it, it doesn't need a second, right?
No, it doesn't need a second.
Thank you.
Welcome to the Human Services Commission.
Okay.
Kevin Glover.
Kevin Glover, sorry.
Item 16E, appointment to one unscheduled vacancy on the Architectural Review Board for a term ending June 30, 2027. And we have three candidates for this seat, Howard Lacks, Kinyou Lee, and Victoria Pakshong.
Any nominations?
Uh, I'll nominate, aye, Kinyou Lee.
Any other nominations?
Yeah, I'll nominate Howard Lacks.
Any others? Okay.
Yeah, we just gotta call us.
Councilmember Wick?
Lee.
Councilmember Hall?
Lee.
Councilmember Raskin?
Uh, Lacks.
Councilmember, uh, I'm sorry, Mayor Protemterosis?
Lee.
Councilmember Snell?
Lee.
Councilmember Zanit Skaya?
Lee.
And Mayor Protemtegrate?
Mayor? Lee. Welcome, it's okay, it's okay. Welcome to the Architectural Review Board, Mr. Lee.
I'll change my vote.
By acclamation.
All right, now the fun really begins.
Now.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion on the Measure GS Resident Oversight Committee. I move that we seat a quorum tonight and not the full 11 seats. That way they are able to continue or start the body of work, but we also have opportunity to seek more applicants.
What's the quorum?
Six. There's, it's an 11-seat committee.
So we have, we have 11 applications, we're only going to seat five right now?
Six.
Six, I'm sorry, which is the quorum. Well, yeah, because there's 11 apps.
So do we need to vote on that motion?
Oh, do we need to vote on only appointing five tonight, and six tonight? Geez. I don't know what's wrong with me.
All in, Teroses, correct?
Yes, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so we're only going to be appointing six seats to the Measure GS Advisory Board, and-
And, mayor, I have one other question, if you don't mind. We received in this packet a late application that they were being asked to consider. Is that something that we were able to do and can do in this moment?
I think we said yes to considering it.
Yes.
Okay, so then there's 12 applicants, I guess.
Oh, the paper applicant? I see what you're saying, yes. So we have 12 applicants, and does everybody have the paper applicant? Yeah, that's also not, that's not on the QR. Is that gonna be listed?
It's in there.
Okay.
It'll be in there. All right, item 16D, appointment to one unscheduled vac, I'm sorry, item 16C, appointments to 11 newly created seats on the Measure GS Resident Oversight Committee with five terms ending on June 30, 2026, and six terms ending on June 30, 2028. All right, so, so this is a little complicated, I have-
Because of the dates?
Yeah, so I have two different, not even the dates, because they'll actually select the dates by lot when they, when they're seated, but there's certain, a number of low-income applicants, and there's a certain number of any-income candidate or applicants, and then they also have specific qualifiers. So I did this one of two ways. For the any-income seats, we can actually just vote on them all on one ballot, or we can do them one by one. And actually, I think, oh no, all those, you should just do one ballot.
Clerk, I have a question, though. In order to have, we know that we need six to have a quorum, but in what, do we have to have a specific balance between the specificities of?
Yes.
Okay, so what would that balance be?
Mayor, you do not have to fill particular seats to constitute the quorum.
Okay, so we don't have to fill particular seats?
No, not that, but there are-
But we just have to pick six, but we have to keep top of mind that those are the, okay.
Maybe we can pick six, and then you can tell us if-
If we've fulfilled.
People fulfill any of those.
Well, it says it right here, too.
Right, you just can't have too many from any particular category and still get the total numbers, and you have to specify which seats they're filling, the term expiring this year or next year.
Okay, so then maybe we should do it by seat.
Well, it looks like you've got it picked out that way, right? The QR codes are related to-
So there's, well, there's several different ones. So, for example, for the any-income seats, I'll show the list. So there are five applicants. There's one seat specifically earmarked for an attorney, there's one seat specifically earmarked for someone with an accounting background, and there's one seat specifically accounted for, I think, someone, I'm sorry, I need my list.
Can we propose that we go through each one, and if there's a nomination, we vote, and if there's not, we don't? Can we do that? Just if no one is nominating based on those names, and we just move to the next set? So should we start with this one?
Yeah, so Bruce Wessel?
So, so I'd like to nominate Michael Soloff, Anujan, Jiva Prakash, Prakash, David Goldsman, and Amy Anderson.
And, council, you'll need to specify which terms they are filling to. The 26 expiring or the 28 expiring?
I think they do that by lots when they meet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we have to specify the, like, whether it's attorney or accountant.
That's what we just said we're doing. We're doing it by each group, so this is the any-income seat.
So here's, three of these candidates are actually attorneys. One fits the accounting background, and the other one fits the affordable housing developer. So, now, we can have multiple attorneys, that's not the issue, but we should probably specifically seat certain people according to their qualifications, and then go back and-
Well, I thought you had them separated based on that.
No, not for this one.
Okay, so-
Soloff, Soloff fits the attorney. Anderson fits the affordable housing developer, and Goldsman, I believe, fits the financial background accounting. Is that correct, Madam Clerk? That's right.
How many attorneys can be on the?
As many as you want. Uh, can I, I mean, I'd like to also nominate Wessel.
That's everybody.
Yeah.
I mean, you could, ten, I mean, there's, what, five, well, that's, if you two, all five, that's a quorum. So I don't know if, you probably don't want-
Well, six is a quorum.
Well, but you're gonna have five, and then you only have one more seat available on the other one. I don't know if you want to try to balance it out, or you have three and three for the low-income and the any-income, or if you want to just say all five of these.
I mean, I only have one other nominee who is not on this list, who fits another category.
Yeah. Do we have multiple applicants for the low-income?
Yes.
Should we start with that, please? Can we actually start with that list?
Okay, so I do have these split up, they're, I have them on one ballot, or I have them split up based on their, not their qualifications, but their-
Yeah, let's start with the formerly homeless.
So the formerly homeless list, uh, let's see. There are four candidates that qualify for this seat.
Okay, I would nominate Wade Kelly and Renee Buchanan.
Councilmember Zanit Skaya? I'm gonna nominate Teresa Marasco, I know. And then should we go back to the?
No, we can actually vote, we can do a vote.
Well, let me ask you this. Okay, go ahead. I'm a little confused. Is this for one seat? Yeah. This is for one seat, yes.
Okay.
Okay, let's vote.
So now what do we scan? Which one, oh, I see, it's right here, yeah.
Wait, formerly homeless, right?
Right, so it's 16. 16C4.
What, C4? I'm sorry.
Did everybody submit? It's easy on my phone.
You're waiting for one person? All right, votes are in.
Can we just read the final results?
Do you want me to go through it?
Okay, um, round one, Renee Buchanan, three votes, Kelly Wade, Kelly, three, Teresa Marasco, one, round two, Renee Buchanan, four, Kelly Wade, three, Teresa Marasco, zero. So welcome Renee Buchanan to one of the seats for Measure GS Resident Oversight Committee. And now we'll go-
All right, so now we'll go to the next.
Deed restricted, yeah.
Deed restricted. But again, we don't have to use all these. So I'm gonna remove Renee Buchanan, because she was already picking the last seat. So there's three candidates. Do you want to keep all three, or do you?
Are there any nominations?
I would like to nominate Wade Kelly.
Any other nominations? It's like, your name's in here. Any other nominations? By acclamation? Aye. Welcome Wade Kelly to Measure GS Resident Oversight Committee. Okay, now, what will be the next? Um, do we want to go back to, do we have four? I can't remember, was there, well, you guys actually nominated all five.
So we have mentally, I'm sorry, mental, physical challenges seats.
Okay, let's look at that list.
And actually, so there's only one person on this list who, or, I'm sorry, there's two, Gregory Curcio and Teresa Marasco.
Are we leaving that open?
Who's on the low-income one?
Well, everyone's on the low-income one, but there is one more for seniors.
So do we have to?
Well, so a lot of the same people, there's just-
We can choose which seats to fill. So I would recommend that we move to the any-income seats to fill the remainder of the four seats.
And what I'll just say as a comment publicly is, what has happened is now we're left with only one person. That's, we're looking to have more people apply under the senior seat and the physical challenge seat potentially, right? It's still open to apply. Okay, so now we're gonna go to the one where we have more applications. Okay. So what nominations do you have?
So my previous nominations of Michael Soloff, Anujan, Jiva Prakash, David Goldsman, and Amy Anderson.
You're nominating four, okay. Any other?
Yeah, Bruce Wessel.
Bruce Wessel, okay.
So that's everybody, so since-
So we'll scan it in ranked choice.
And we're looking for how many seats?
Four.
Four.
Because we've appointed two. We don't have to, you could also just-
Because I'm pretty sure we have a low-income seat that we have on point.
Do we?
Well, we would have to pass a new motion, because we already moved that we would only fill six seats tonight.
Yeah, but I'm saying we don't have to fill four on this one.
We can fill three and come back.
Yeah, quorum, so we, well, we need either one there.
She's saying that we could fill three and then one on the low income if we wanted, or two and two, or whatever.
That's why I wanted to see who was on the low.
Can we see the low-income list? Sorry, Nikki.
It's all the same.
Same people.
Except for Renetta Price.
And Melan Ramsey.
On Ramsey.
I would, I would have nominated Renetta Price, but-
Do you want to, do you guys want to? She's not eligible.
Oh, she's not, okay.
No, she is eligible. I'm sorry, we got a ruling from the city attorney today that she is eligible, as long as the company that she works for does not seek funding. So currently, she's eligible.
Yeah, okay. Um, we can just go back to the regular income seats, that's fine.
Okay.
I mean, because I find it hard to believe that the people concerned wouldn't ever seek funding while she's on this committee.
So just because your rank's on, the issue is that that person lives with, in a building that's owned by the people concerned, correct? And because, she works for- Because she's a case manager for the people concerned, there's some-
Sorry, this is a wrong list, sorry.
All right, well, does it mean we can't appoint her? It just means for now, we're gonna focus on the any-income seats. All right, so we have everybody nominated. We can tell us when we can scan.
Here's the deal, so each, again, there's three attorneys, there's one CFO, that's the financial seat, and then there's one seat for the, I'm sorry, it was CFO.
So we can do the accountant.
Yeah, you can appoint the man.
Attorney and the housing developer with these.
Well, so then is the, I mean, Russell is the-
So what, what I'm saying is that we could do a ballot for the attorneys, since there's three of them, and then you could vote by acclamation. If you want to appoint the other ones, since you nominated them all, you could appoint the other ones by acclamation, because they each fill a particular niche.
I think we can decide that when they get seated.
Oh, yeah. Bruce Wessel fills what role, if any? Attorney. Michael Soloff is an attorney. Anujan is an attorney. And David and Amy are CFOs?
Amy's an affordable housing developer, and David Goldsman is the-
With a finance background.
The other thing, too, is you can just put them all on one ballot, and whoever gets the top four of the four.
Right, it would be the top four get seated.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what I thought we were starting with.
Okay, so you can go ahead and scan your QR codes.
This is C1 here?
This is-
Yeah, any income?
16C1.
Just scan it on the-
Did you scan the any-income seats? It's any income, you have to do that one.
16C1.
This is a complicated.
I'm all done.
Yeah, it's the first, we'll get it down. It's, yeah.
Good job, Nikki.
I like a challenge.
I think I made a strategic blunder in my strategic footing here.
Can you do it again?
Strategic.
I mean, in the regular election, you can still be a whole lot after three ballots, so we could always re-
Do we get to see, do we get to see who we're waiting on? No, I'm just kidding.
Perhaps we'll wait, city attorney in the, for next round when we do another appointment. Perhaps I'll wait, uh, city attorney in the, for next round, when we, um, do another appointment round for this committee, you can clarify for us if community, because Ms. Price works for Community Corps, if that, that means that Community Corps is precluded from seeking any funding.
Of Santa Monica, you mean?
Yeah, they were for Community Corps, yeah. Is precluded from seeking any funding when this person is on this committee, or if this person just has to recuse themselves from any, so we can just get more clarity on, on that vote, yeah, thanks.
Okay.
Okay. Do you want me to read the rounds, or just go to the bottom?
You can just go to the bottom. Oh, crap, well, that didn't work.
Let's see, let's go up, what does the first one say?
Did it know that we were electing four, or did it think we were only electing one?
Well, it would have them listed.
Oh, that may have been, uh, uh, that may have been the case, hold on for a second.
Wait. Do everybody?
Sorry, I think I screwed this up.
Yeah, what did you do, did you delete people? Because I see it says four point eight three, I think he only voted for two people.
No, it said up for five seats, so.
It's because, it's because some people only voted for certain, for certain candidates, instead of all five, so what we, what's happened is.
Thanks, Alex.
And when it goes tie, it goes to Wiggum, sorry. I, I believe what's happened here is, because, as, as is their right, certain council members only voted for certain candidates, and it, we have a tie.
Between.
Between Michael Soloff and Amy Anderson, the first one, in which case it goes to the weighted Gregory average per our council rules, which then, which is why we see the decimal numbers here. So if you scroll down. So Amy, Amy is elected in round one. Amy Anderson has exceeded the quota and is elected. Scroll down to round two. Michael Soloff has exceeded the quota and is elected. Round three, Bruce Wessel.
And round four.
And round four, Anujan Jiva Prakash, Prakash.
Okay.
So, everyone except David Goldsman, right? Well, that's, we, we only voted for four, because we were seating six.
We only voted for four.
So, welcome Anujan, Michael Soloff, and Amy.
Anderson and Bruce Wessel.
And Bruce.
And there's more to come.
And there's more to come. Please apply. SantaMonica.gov, boards and commissions.
It actually is kind of fun.
Yeah.
I just wanted to quickly clarify something, so the folks who, uh, had already applied and already are on this list.
Are still on the list.
Are still on the list, and still eligible, so they can still be voted on, so don't.
All of the folks that are still on here, you're still eligible, because we still have openings. We just placed six seats to get the work started, so there's a quorum, so those that are still on there, you're still eligible. Um, and we are hopeful that more folks will apply, pay attention to the requirements. We all doubted Dan in his ranked choice voting, we were proven on tonight, it can be swift and sort of fun, so thank you.
So the last two items, do you want to do that as a consent item, or do you want to do each individually?
A consent.
Yeah.
Yeah. She's the queen of the system.
Okay. Sorry. Okay, so I move, uh, on the consent calendar that we approve item, uh, sixteen F related to travel funds, and sixteen G, uh, related to single stair reform.
Sorry, point of order. I, we've gotten into the habit of passing these sixteen council member discussion items as motions, when I believe the rules state that we do it as a consent calendar, where any council member can pull an item and have it as a discussion.
Oh, so I move the rest.
So you would, you would move the consent, you would move all of them.
Consent calendar for the sixteen items.
Sixteen items on consent.
Yeah.
I didn't. I, I moved the sixteen items on consent.
Move the remaining sixteen items on consent.
Would be, uh, sixteen F and sixteen G.
Second.
You have to do, because there's money, or to call the vote.
Councilmember Zaniskaya?
Yes.
Councilmember Snell?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Potemterosis?
Yes.
Councilmember Raskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Zwick?
Yes.
And Mayor Negrete?
Yes.
I'm sorry, for the public record, that was a yes for Hall.
Yes, as well.
Yes, yes, sorry.
I scanned, I'm sorry. Okay.
Do we have any adjournments? This seems like so real, that we, it's eleven oh five, eleven oh six, yay! Well, I'm just going to say keep it sassy, Santa Monica, until April eighth at five thirty PM, thank you and good night.
Thank you.